Sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure, I can't hear anyone, so I don't know if you've started yet. This is Alder Slack.
Hi, Alder. We haven't started yet. We'll call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Harrington McKinney is present indeed. Alder Knox. Alder Knox is present. Alder Latimer Burris. Alder Latimer Burris is here. Alder Madison. Alder Madison is here. Alder Martinez Rutherford. Alder Martinez Rutherford is here. Alder Meadze. Meadze is here. Alder Rumel. Alder Rumel is here. Alder Slack.
Present.
Slack is here. Alder Tischler. Alder Tischler is here. Alder Revere. Alder Revere is here. Alder Vitiver.
Present.
Alder Vitiver is here. Alder Wohelia. Wohelia is present. Alder Bennett will be late. Alder Conklin. Alder Conklin is here. Alder Curry will be late. Alder Duncan. Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers. Alder Evers is present. Alder Field. Alder Field is present. Alder Figaro Cole. Alder Figaro Cole is here. Alder Govindarajan. Alder Govindarajan is here. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, so as per usual, I'll just remind us that we're here to do the business of the people of Madison and ask folks to be respectful and kind, to refrain from using profanity, whether you're here to make public comment or serving on the body or acting as staff. And also, although I know that there may be penting discussions about this, I'll just remind us that we historically have agreed to only speak twice on an item and for no more than 10 minutes at a time, and request that we all address each other by titles respectfully. Our first item tonight is a presentation. It's Legisstar 79105. It's the performance and activity update from Destination Madison. And we have Ellie Westman Chin here, and we need to do a few things to get the presentation going. Hey, it worked. So Ellie, do you want to introduce yourself?
Absolutely. So, I'm the president and CEO of Destination Madison. Thank you so much for giving me a few times, a few times, a few minutes tonight just to give you an update on Destination Madison and some of the impact that we saw in 2022. So knowing that we've got a few members here, newly elected officials, I did want to just start with, you know, Destination Madison, why do we exist? And so here's a statement about Destination Madison, but our primary purpose is to drive visitor spending in our community. To give you a start, room tax, let's talk about room tax. So when a visitor checks into a hotel room, they pay 10% room tax on that room. That room tax is collected by the hotel, and then it is remitted to the city. So the city receives the money. Thirty percent of the money that we receive from room tax, the city retains for whatever purposes they need it for, and 70% then is given to the Room Tax Commission. The Rooms Tax Commission is comprised of six members appointed by the mayor. I'm not on room tax because we receive room tax funding, but I go to all the room tax meetings, and Alder Revere is on room tax, and Alder Figaro Cole is one of our new members on room tax. And we talk each year about Destination Madison and what we're doing. Others are also receiving funds from the room tax, including Manona Terrace, Ulbrich, and the zoo and so forth. So some of our primary objectives at Destination Madison is we want to promote Madison to new and returning visitors. These are leisure travelers, somebody that's going to come in for the weekend with family, friends, maybe by themselves and experience Madison. We want to attract new and repeat conventions, events, and sporting tournaments, sports events to our community. We want to provide excellent service. This is really important because this is an area where a lot of cities are lacking right now. We conduct and analyze tourism research, and this is really important because the money that is contributed to us through room tax, we want to make sure we're spending it strategically, and we're getting the best ROI on that dollar that we can get. And then we want to support and build our local community. So I thought I would just share with you, this is a very small snapshot of events that we've hosted in Madison. Destination Madison is 50 years old this year, and as you can see here, there's been a plethora of events coming in, some as like the American Society of Animal Science, to the CrossFit Games, which kicked off this afternoon out at the Alliant Energy Center. So before I move forward, I want to talk a little bit about our accomplishments in 2022. We invested a $1 million ARPA grant that we received from the state 100% into sales and marketing. We wanted to get that visitor back. As we all know, during COVID, people weren't traveling. How do we get that visitor back? How do we get them to choose Madison as opposed to one of our competitors? We expanded our marketing outreach to a 400-mile drive radius. This puts us in markets that we've never, ever advertised in before. It took us to Ohio, Kentucky, Missouri, and we're seeing great results from those markets. And we drove 1 million, just over 1 million new visitors to visitmaddison.com. Combined with the return visitors to Visit Madison, we had the highest visitors to Madison, the visitmaddison.com we've ever seen. Now, I really talked about this with the staff because I'm kind of paid to stand up here and talk about Madison, and thank you for letting me have a job that I get to brag about Madison every day because it's kind of a cool job. But I'm also here to tell you about all the great things Madison's doing. But I thought, wouldn't it be great if some of our partners told you what their partners, you know, what their relationship is with us? Here is a really great testimonial from our friends at Giant Jones Brewery. And because of that $1 million ARPA grant, we were able to do things and create new programs like Madison on Tap, which takes our visitors around to our distilleries and wineries and breweries and really lift them up. We also are able to create co-op advertising, so somebody like Giant Jones can co-op with us, and now they can promote in Chicago and New York and these places that they couldn't do on their own. And that's really important to us. We expanded our TikTok following by 400%. We kind of started TikTok, like, let's try it, and it took off. And it's crazy because our younger travelers, that is where they're looking for things to do and go. Our PR department, Rob Guard is here with me tonight. He's our Director of Communications, hosted 31 national travel riders. We booked 108 new events and conventions with over 111,000 future room nights, and we recruited 70 new partners to our 800-member partner family. Another quote was from Hilton Madison, and the reason I wanted to include this quote is because I told you, our primary purpose is to drive visitors here, and we want to get that visitor, followed very closely by our secondary purpose is lifting up our businesses, lifting up Madison as a whole. We want to make sure we're being good community citizens. So the numbers, I'm a numbers geek, so any time you talk to me, I'm going to probably spout numbers at you. But in 2022, visitors spent $1.4 billion in Madison. And this is, we were so thrilled to see this number because this puts us pre-pandemic numbers. We did not expect pre-pandemic numbers this early. All of our research was showing we weren't getting back to pre-pandemic numbers until late '24, early '25, and we hit that two years early. And that's because of all of our many partners, including our city, that said, let's get it back. Let's get that tourism dollar back in our city. That equates to visitors spending about $3.7 million a day in our community. And that saved all of us as residents $625 on our own household taxes. And we employ just almost 18,000 people, Madison-area residents. So where are we going? All last year, while we were getting really aggressive in sales and marketing, we started working on our three-year strategic plan. Because where are we going? When I, I've been here two years, so it's like we needed to do recovery, and once we did recovery, how do we look forward? So we started talking about the plan. What do we want to do? What do we want to accomplish? And one of the things I kept saying is, what does success look like? If we are sitting here at the end of December of 2025, what is success? And we decided we want to create the biggest economic impact through tourism for the city of Madison that we can. Our goal is to reach $2 billion in direct visitor spending by the end of '25. When we do that, that's going to be a 43% increase over pre-pandemic numbers. So this is a little bit of an eye chart. I apologize, but we wanted to talk a little bit about our strategic pillars. Number one is that continue to grow the brand awareness of Madison. I have tasked our team, I said, by the end of this program, I want to be able to travel, and people say, oh, I'm so tired of hearing about Madison. You guys are everywhere. That's what I want us to be. I want us to be front and center. We want to continue to strategically book business at Manona Terrace and our other venues around town. And then we have over 800 partners right now. Eighty percent of those are small businesses. We want to continue to lift them up. But what was really important is we want to add 100 new partners this year. We had a goal of 30% of those being diverse-owned businesses. I'm happy to report that standing here today, we're at 65% of our new partnerships are diverse-owned businesses. And then we want to support regional development, like Lake Manona Waterfront Design, John Olin Drive, the South Side Neighborhood, more flights at the airport. We all want more direct flights, and so Amtrak and things like that. So Fortune Favors, formerly known as Nutcrack, this is a great quote from them because it is, we do want to be that driver here in Madison. We do want to get that visitor here. We do want them to spend all their money, and then we do want them to go home, unless they want to take one of our open jobs and they can stay with us. And then I put Lucy's Passion Flowers on here because I think this is really important. We started partnering with them right when they opened. Brand-new business in Madison, they were like, we're putting all of our energies to open. How are we going to promote and advertise? And we're like, we can help support that. And so we have had a great partnership with them to lift them up because a lot of times when our conventions come to town, they'll hire a florist to do centerpieces and different things, or they'll hire a florist when they're doing a special event at Garver or somewhere else. So now's my time to ask you. One, we're going to ask you to get engaged. Through your companies, you might attend meetings and conventions. So if you're traveling and you're in a different city and you're at a convention, you're like, hey, you know what? We should be hosting this in Madison. Call us because we'd love to work with you on getting that convention here. This happened just last week where one of our friends at The Chamber was at an event. She texted me. She goes, Ellie, this would be the perfect event for Madison. I said, great, get a meeting planner name, and now we've got a meeting with them next week. I do this shout-out, and I hope I don't embarrass her, but the mayor is awesome about this because every time I meet the mayor, she's like, here's two things that I thought about that I went to that I think would be great for here, and then we'll run with it. But we do know that when we have somebody who is local helping us support to get that event here, we are much more likely to win it than if we just go and pick up the phone, which we do all the time, cold calling, hey, come to Madison, but we'd love to do it with you. We're going to do a resident sentiment survey later this year. When you get that survey, please take it, and then please share it with your family, with your friends, with your peers, or workmates, or whomever you like to share it with. Come and help us celebrate our 50th anniversary. We're going to be at the Silvy on November 29th, celebrating 50 years. It's really a celebration of our destination as a whole, not just Destination Madison. This event's going to support the Madison, Destination Madison Foundation. The foundation was created about 10 years ago because we got money from the Ironman Foundation, and we created a grant program for youth sports grants to give kids in underrepresented communities an opportunity to play sports. So over the past 10 years, we've donated about $450,000 to about 200 groups, groups like, I had, I wrote them down just to give you a little bit of an idea, Free Bikes for Kids, where we helped them purchase helmets and bikes for kids, Miracle League of Dane County, where we help offset costs of adaptive equipment for the upcoming baseball season, Black Men Coalition Foundation. We supported their cause to have a free youth baseball program for youth of color, and the First T of Central Wisconsin. This year, we're expanding the foundation. We added about six new members to our trustees. And we're also going to not only continue to do the youth sports grant, but we're also going to put more effort into our DEI program, our workforce initiatives for tourism, and place-making. You'll get an invitation about that. And then follow us on social media. These are all of the channels that we're on. Our handle's @DestinationMadison on all of them. So if you're wondering what's going on, or you've got family members in town, either go to our website or go to one of our social channels. We've got great events listed on there. And that's it. On your tables, I put my business card. And then we also gave you one of our brand-new inspiration guides, and the tri-fold is our impact of '22, and then kind of where we're headed over the next couple of years. But I'd love to get on your calendars. If I haven't had the opportunity to meet with you yet, just take a few minutes of your time and say, hey, what questions do you have, and how can we work together? And how can I support what you're trying to accomplish as one of our elected officials? So that is it from me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ellie. Are there questions for Ellie or her team? Alder Wahilahe?
Thank you, Mayor. Ellie, when I first met you two years ago, you're new, and this is really very impressive.
Thank you.
From, you know, where you started and where you are. So I really appreciate the, all the work you have done for the city of Madison. My question to you is, have you intentionally or proactively engaged the nonprofits?
We have, absolutely. We have very intentionally engaged the nonprofits. Some of them are actually on our board because we want to make sure that relationship stays really strong. So for instance, Bautzizar from the Latino Academy is on our board. We work very closely with them. We just met today with Urban League. We've worked really closely with them on the Black Business Hub. Big Brothers Big Sisters is on our board, so that's a really important part of what we do, and we want to make sure we continue that outreach. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, hi, Ellie. First, just a comment. I just wanted to say I really enjoy working with you on a couple of committees, and I was really excited about the study on the feasibility of an indoor sports facility on the South Side. So I'm really excited about that prospect. And just wanted to just comment on all the exciting discussions we've been having about attracting more people to Madison, to the downtown area, and connecting the South Side to that, to those efforts. So keep doing the good work.
Thank you very much. And one of the things that Alder Knox, we're really putting a lot of emphasis on our neighborhoods. We want our visitor, we know they're going to go State Street, right? We know, everybody knows State Street. What we want to do is get them out to the neighborhoods. We want to get them to Willie Street. We want them to get in the, you know, Monroe. We want to give them the South Side and experience all the great things that are happening there. So that's been great work that we've been doing together on that, including the Destination District. Yeah.
Alder Slack?
Yes, thank you for this great presentation. Very exciting. I just wondered if you could speak to sort of what you've, what you see as the need for more either convention space, hotel space, or both? And are you hearing that there are certain businesses or organizations that are considering Madison, that are going elsewhere, and why that might be?
Great, great question. So we are so thrilled about Embassy Suites being built because that is one of the hurdles that we hear from our meeting planners, because a lot of our competitor cities have hotels right there attached to their convention center. And not that ours is a far walk, because we all know that the concourse isn't a far walk from Manona Terrace, but it's still, so having Embassy Suites getting built is a big selling point for us, and we've been using that a lot. We have the Moxie Bean built down on East Wash, and I'm missing one other one. So from a hotel perspective, we're pretty solid on the number of rooms. We worked with Manona Terrace. My first year here, we worked with a group called JLL where we did an optimization study of Manona Terrace, saying, are we full, or can we fit other conventions in? Because these big conventions that come in spend a lot of money with Manona Terrace. What we learned is, no, we've got space, and we've got room to do that. So we're implementing a five-year optimization study with the Manona Terrace folks right now. And when we get optimized, then yeah, you know, selfishly, I'm going to say, yeah, it would be great to have more convention space because we could get bigger things here. We consistently turn away things that are too big for us, that want to come here because they've heard great things about Madison. So, you know, eventually, could that happen? You know, would that happen? Maybe? Would I like to see it happen? Yes, definitely. As far as businesses coming here, that's not as much as our space as it is The Chambers' space and MatterUp, so I'm not sure I've got really great answers on that one. I apologize. But I can get more information and get it to you. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Thank you very much, Mayor. And thank you, Ellie, for the presentation. As someone who has a great affinity for glitter, I really appreciate your use of digital glitter in the presentation. Thank you very much. I really felt that. I've also, I would like to let everybody know, the campaigns that you've been doing to, on social media to really point people to Lost Gems has been beautiful. And as somebody who is not a Madison, you know, wasn't born here, wasn't raised here, I want everybody to experience Madison, so thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions, so thank you again, Ellie, for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right, that will take us to item number two, which is Legisstar 79102, recognizing August 19th, 2023 as Africa Fest Day in the city of Madison. Alder Wahilahe will begin. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the African Association of Madison, Inc., whose mission is to foster advancement of Africa in the greater Madison area and share diverse heritage and tradition inherent in rich cultures of Africa, will host the 23rd Annual Africa Fest on Saturday, August 19, 2023. And whereas Africa Fest, first staged in 1998, is a family-oriented educational, cultural event that provides opportunities to improve race relations and encourage diversity and inclusion in the greater Madison area. And whereas the Women of African Women Association, whose mission is to support African women and their family, have been an integral part of the organization and celebration of Africa Fest, and will organize, decorate, and run the Africa tent. And whereas the Africa Fest features African immigrants celebrating and sharing African traditions and culture heritage through performances, displays, food, art, and more. And whereas, performance will include local performers and musicians such as Tani De Kite and Afro Funk Stars, a team- Kite and Afro-Funk stars, Atim Mefu, Limania, the Nigerian, and many other local cultural groups. And?
And whereas, the year's theme of Africa Fest will be Faces of African Beauty, which will focus on the variations of beauty that may be found all over the African continent and will show, and will be showcased in the African tent throughout the day. And whereas, Africa Fest will begin with Strides for Africa and an annual 3K, 5K Run Walk, whose proceeds will be used in their entirety to fund portable water wells and solar light projects for our communities in rural Africa. And whereas, as a result of Africa Fest, the African Association of Madison, Inc. is often contacted to provide educational presentations and lectures for events such as the annual Mandela Washington Fellows Conference with the African Studies Department at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, as well as for various high schools and middle schools' cultural awareness weeks. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council hereby recognize August 19, 2023, as Africa Fest Day in the city of Madison. So ends the reading.
Thank you, Alder. We'll take that as moved by Alder Wahilihi and seconded by Alder Harrington McKinney. And I believe we have someone here to receive, if you'd like to come up. We have Ray Kumapai.
Yes.
Come up. Alder, if you want to present. Would you like to say a few words?
Oh, yes, sure, definitely. This is a little bit low, but I'll bend over. So I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you all, and especially, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
Alder, yep. So I wanted to thank you all for providing this recommendation to the African Association of Madison. I won't go through the, all the lists that NASTRA read. And for people who know me, I tend to go beyond, but I'll keep it short. So thank you so much. It, my first time of actually coming out here to, to at least see all of you in session. So I appreciate that. I'm very appreciative of what the Destination Madison does, too, because they highlight the events that we have in the, in the community, in the Madison community. I'd also like to thank the mayor and the deputies for all the work they do, especially the DEI team, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Team. They have provided guidance and support all the years that we've been conducting Africa Fest. For those of you who have not attended the festival before, it's very vibrant, very colorful, and it's a means of showcasing our, our culture to the community. So the onstage performances that we provide are actually by maybe your neighbors, you know? People see me onstage, and they run, run into me in the store and immediately recognize me. So I appreciate all the efforts that you do in the community, and all the selfless work that you do is very, very much recognized. I'd like to thank NASTRA and Charles for all the input that they provide to the African community. And for those who are not aware, the African continent consists of 53, going on 54 nations. So for the African Association to be the umbrella to all the other African country organizations in town, Africa Fest is a day in which we all gather together and showcase the culture and the vibrancy and the beauty to the Madison community. I love Madison in that Madison itself, I mean, they want to learn. And once a group of people want to learn, you've got it half-made. So I won't go too, too much, but I do want to ensure that I will share this commendation with the African community, broad and large. And I'm hopeful that I'll see, if not all of you, most of you, on Africa Fest Day, Saturday, August 19. And the mayor has indicated that she may be coming, so it will be wonderful. So Africa Fest is a Madison celebration. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And for anyone who hasn't been to Africa Fest, either folks in the room or listening to us on the award-winning Madison City channel, I highly recommend. It's a great event. You are sure to hear good music. There's fantastic food, wonderful crafts. Very worth going to check that out. So that's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. And that brings us to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on items on today's agenda? Seeing none. Then we'll move on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Curry?
A consent agenda is moved with recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings, except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, and two, items which Alders have separated out for discussion debate purposes. This document lists agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, and items introduced from the floor. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda number 52, Legislative File Number 78884, amending Section 2.025 of the Madison General Ordinances to remove the notification requirement if an Alder will be absent from the city for five or more days. Report of the Common Council Executive Committee, recommended action will be to approve the substitute that is before you. Agenda item number 53, Legislative File, oops, I'm sorry, I got the Legislative File for Agenda Item 52 incorrect. Don't have it right offhand.
78594.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Agenda item number 53, Legislative File Number 78884, create a new 1.0 FTE library program coordinator position within the library operating budget. Reported the Finance Committee, recommended action is to adopt. Agenda item 57, Legislative File Number 78951, by title only, 2023 Midyear Appropriation Resolution, reported finance, recommended action is to adopt, and 15 votes are required. Agenda item 60, Legislative File Number, Legislative File Number 78341, authorizing the implementation of the Body-Worn Camera Pilot Program. Report of the Police Civilian Oversight Board, recommended action is for the council to adopt. Agenda items excluded by either request of Alders or speakers registered by 6:30 on August 1st. Agenda item 60, Legislative File Number 78341, authorizing the implementation of the Body-Worn Camera Pilot. Speakers are registered. Items introduced from the floor is Legislative File Number 79226, creating a housing task force addressing the city of Madison's affordable housing shortage and other related housing issues. Introduced by Alder Latimer-Burris. I'm not sure if this is correct, because I saw some communications, but seeking to be referred to Plan Commission on September 7th and return to council on September 19th. Okay. I thought it was going to go to council first, so, thank you.
All right. Are there any additional items that Alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none. Then I'll just review. The recommended action for 52 is to adopt the substitute. That's version two. The recommended actions for 53, 57, and 60 are to adopt. Note on 57 that that requires 15 votes, and we will exclude item 60. Seeing nothing else. President Curry, a motion?
Move to adopt consent agenda.
It's moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. Those items are adopted with those recommendations. And then our only item excluded from the consent agenda is item 60. So we will go to public comment on item 60. And our first registrant is Alex Ricketts of District 19, to be followed by Stephanie Bradley Wilson, to be followed by Sherri Carter. We have Alex.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here today. I'm here to speak upon Amendment Number 60, the Body-Worn Camera Pilot Program. I am for the pilot program. I am a retired lieutenant from the Greensboro Police Department of North Carolina. During my tenure at Greensboro Police Department, I wore, supervised, and managed officers that wore body-worn cameras. I did that from 2012, when we adopted and implemented the program, until 2023, when I retired of last year. I visited communities all over Madison, from the North Side, Kennedy Heights, to Allied Drive. When I first got here, my job was try to build the bridges between the police department and the community. One of the first things I did was I went into the schools. You know, when I got here, everybody said, they don't want the kids, they don't want the police in the schools, they don't want to talk to the kids. I went to the, I would say, the most, the school that had the most minorities, the high, high school. We had a meeting with the Black Student Union. And during that meeting, which was volunteer for the students, they said to us, we want you around more. We want you here. They didn't have to come to that meeting. It was volunteer. We want you here. We want to know you. They were happy to see us. So I found that not to be true about the youth not wanting the police around. So during this time, as I'm still going around the community, getting to know people from all walks of life, upper level, lower level, in between, I asked them about body-worn cameras, just in conversation. Nobody said they didn't want them. Not in Kennedy Heights, not on Allied Drive, not in Meadowlands, not on Tree Lane, nobody I talked to. I had a group of people that was going to be here with me tonight, but they were scared off because they felt they wouldn't receive funding for their nonprofit if they showed up and showed support for the police. So I got a few people here with me, and you'll hear their names called when they're told to line up. With that being said, I am African American, as you know, black wife, black daughter, black father, black mother, black fraternity, Prince Allmason, which is a black organization. So as a black man, I wouldn't stand here before you and advocate for a policy that would hurt black people, because it would hurt me. I'm not a police officer anymore. So I'm a citizen just like, or a community member just like everyone here. So I ask you to support the test program. We're not implementing anything. The money's there for it, already allocated. Please support it. The people in the community want it.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Stephanie Bradley Wilson of District 18, to be followed by Sherri Carter, to be followed by Keith Finley. Do we have Stephanie online?
Mayor, there is no one in the queue with that name.
Okay. That will go on and come back. Next is Sherri Carter, Madison, to be followed by Keith Finley, to be followed by Marcus Allen. Sherri?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. Good to hear your voice.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the body-worn cameras. Both city officials and community activists have debated whether to make body-worn cameras standard equipment for the police department for almost a decade. I was part of that discussion. Questions that arise from our debates have been, will, will there be an uptick in arrests, or will the footage increase the conviction rate for lower-income people of color? Unfortunately, we are unable to predict the answers to these questions. However, we understand that body-worn cameras are not a pincia to in-all issues of today. Our very own Mayor Rose Conroy stated it may be part of the answer. It is part of the answer because body-worn cameras are a critical tool for transparency and accountability. The truth is, body-worn cameras are standard equipment across Wisconsin and throughout the United States. But we are not alone in a decade-long discussion of body-worn cameras. Portland, Oregon voted unanimously to make body-worn cameras standard equipment for the OPD last April of this year. Austin, Texas started their body, body-worn camera program in 2015. In Seattle, Washington started theirs in March of 2017 to equip all frontline SPD with body cameras and to enhance, in order to enhance public trust in the department and greater transparency into officer-public interaction. Closer to home, Milwaukee, Wisconsin began using body-worn cameras in 2015 after the public and members of the common council demanded transparency. Our discussion has lasted 10 years, and we have covered every aspect of this subject matter and looked at every which way for policy. Both the PSRC and the PCOB recommended approval, and I commend them for coming to that, that decision.
Alder, you have about 15 seconds. I'm sorry, former Alder, you have about 15 seconds.
15 seconds, okay. I have been a supporter of the VWC and hoped the pilot would have been passed while I was an elected official. Alas, it was not to be. But at the end of this day, each of you hold the future on whether we move forward as a city or remain stagnant. I hope you choose to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Former Alder. Our next registrant is Keith Finley of District 9, to be followed by Marcus Allen, to be followed by Sally Manchar.
Mayor, there's nobody in the queue with that name, but it looks like Stephanie Wilson is on by phone now.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back around then.
Okay.
So we'll go then to Marcus Allen from District 1, to be followed by Sally Manchar, to be followed by Dan Fitch.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marcus Allen. I'm the pastor of Mount Zion Baptist Church, and I'm here to support this pilot for the body cameras. I was talking to one of my peers in Virginia and telling him I was coming to this meeting tonight, and he asks, you all haven't had body cameras yet? It was something that was really shocking to him and also to me. And so I think a few reasons for this pilot program, as has been stated, that it's not something that's implemented, something that, that we're just trying, you all are, at least the police department is trying to do, to see is it feasible for our community. So we see, we have accountability and transparency. Body cameras can provide an objective, objective record of interactions between police officers and community members. This can help ensure that the law This can help ensure that the law enforcement officers are held accountable for their actions and that incidents of misconduct or abuse of power are also properly investigated. It allows building trust and community relations. The use of body cameras can help foster trust between law enforcement and our communities. When people see that officers are being held accountable and that their interactions are recorded, it may help alleviate some concerns about bias or discriminatory practices. Hopefully, it'll help correct some of these biases or disparities. The over-representation of African-American individuals in our criminal justice system is very concerning. 2022, 40% of all arrests in the City of Madison was African-Americans. 68% of juveniles were African-Americans. These body cameras can be a tool to expose and address some of these racial biases and disparities and what we see is going on in our communities by capturing interactions on the video, and it becomes easier to identify instances of unjust treatment or even discrimination. And then also, it is, I think it'd also be a tool for officer training and professional development. Body camera footage can be used as a training tool for police officers. Reviewing, recording interactions can help identify areas where officers can improve their communication, de-escalation techniques, and adherence to department policies. This can contribute to more effective and unbiased policing practices in the long run.
About 30 seconds left.
30 seconds, and I'm finished. And I don't think these cameras will change behaviors, but it could record the behaviors that happens on the camera. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Pastor. Our next registrant is Sally Manchart of Mount Horeb, to be followed by Dan Fitch, to be followed by Ally Bates. Sally?
Okay, thank you so much. I just want to make two points. The first one is, body-worn cameras will not bring accountability to MPD. What it will bring is hard, factual evidence of the high level of accountability there already is within the Madison Police Department. My second point is, as an RN with over 55 years of experience, I pray that any of you who ever needs to call on the Madison Police Department, you will be able to say, "Thank God, we voted to have body-worn cameras. Thank you so much."
Thank you. Our next registrant is Dan Fitch of District 6, to be followed by Ally Bates, to be followed by Michelle Ellinger-Lindley. Dan?
Mayor, there's no one in the queue with that name.
All right. Then Ally Bates of District 6, to be followed by Michelle Ellinger-Lindley, to be followed by Gregory Gabowski. Do we have Ally?
Mayor, I do not see Ally either.
Okay. And Michelle Ellinger-Lindley of District 18, to be followed by Gregory Gabowski, to be followed by Gregory Galumbiak. Michelle?
Hi, thanks so much, Mayor. So Law Professor and author Michelle Alexander on body-worn cameras said, "These cameras are on the police and won't be filming the police. They'll be filming everyone who comes in contact with the police." We hear the words transparency and accountability, but that is absolutely not what's going to happen here. We have to acknowledge that body-worn cameras do contribute to the system of mass criminalization. The purpose is not to make our communities safer, but to uphold unnecessary surveillance, tracking, and record-keeping of communities at highest risk for exploitation. Something can be both legal and awful at the same time. And on a micro level close to home, here with Madison Police Department, the chief has received and completely dismissed the policy recommendations of the ad hoc committees, most important of which policies were written about how footage is reviewed. And, you know, that committee wanted to have those reports written prior to viewing footage. How is it now that officers will be able to view that footage and then write their reports? They're used and implemented under a guise of transparency. Again, transparency, when they in fact cloud the information coming from officer reports more than they clarify it. They leave us with doctored versions of encounters with stories and not facts. This is a dangerous precedent to uphold. So what is the recourse for the misuse of cameras? What's the recourse if we do find something wrong? What happens when a camera isn't working and the officer kills someone? We don't have answers to those questions. And MPD has had many opportunities to embrace true transparency and accountability, and instead, working toward actual definitions of these terms. They are instead using words to present policies that actually are the exact opposite of what they're trying to report. So to me, this is about values. It's about what we want for our city. And it also comes down to budget, which we don't really know right now. What is the budget? There's no budget analysis. The idea that we have the money set aside for this, and we know how it's going to cost, how much it's going to cost long-term. No, there's not a budget analysis done on this at present time. And where are those data points? Where are the data points for what the measures are to decide whether or not the pilot project was good or not? What are the measures for cameras being the best ones to use? We don't have these answers. This is not transparency and accountability. Please don't be fooled by these words. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gregory Gabowski of Middleton, to be followed by Gregory Galumbiak, to be followed by Steve Verberg. Do we have Gregory Gabowski? If not, then Gregory Galumbiak of District 6, to be followed by Steve Verberg, to be followed by Julia Matthews.
Hello, am I audible?
You are.
I hear a lot of body cam evangelism with a little concern for facts and data. There's a reason why civil rights attorney Michelle Alexander, the author of The New Jim Crow, is opposed to body cams, keeps saying that body cams are not a solution. Likewise, the science-based Black Lives Matter organization Campaign Zero, which used to favor body cam programs, now cautions cities against promoting body cam programs. Likewise, the civil rights organization Upturn, with a mission of examining the intersection between racial and social justice and technology, now opposes body cam programs. Surveys show that prosecutors believe body cams increase conviction rates, but public defenders believe that body cams increase acquittal rates. Both prosecutors and public defenders think body cams will help their side and are caught up in the hoopla and evangelization, just as people throughout history have been caught up in other fads. The reality is that body cams appear to generally increase charging rates, especially for lower-level offenses resulting in more people from disadvantaged communities being caught up in the criminal justice system. Body cam footage generally has little impact on conviction or acquittal rates, except for a few specific categories of offenses, such as a charge of assaulting a police officer, but they do increase conviction rates. Body cam programs are extremely expensive, and cities experience an opportunity cost for money that could be spent on human needs in ways that actually reduce crime are instead being spent on body cam programs. And on this point, I'll note that MPD has ignored the requirement the council imposed last year that in the pilot, Officer Body Cam Associated workload had to be tallied via worklogs and this be included in the SOP. Since it appears that MPD doesn't want the full cost of body cam programs exposed, are you cool with MPD flagrantly disobeying your orders? And MPD is also ignoring almost all the preconditions for implementation of the body cam program specified in the body cam committee report and dropped almost all the important provisions in the model policy. All the provisions they dropped were designed to mitigate harms associated with a body cam program. For example, in the MPD SOP, officers can view body cam footage before writing reports. As Mike Giannaccio of OIR, who reviewed MPD policies and practices, said, "I do not believe that is the best practice, and I would resist adopting body cameras. In fact, it's going to be the practice." End quote. You're watching in real time as the police and the city attorney's office ensure that police have complete control of body-worn camera footage so that it won't get in the way of the status quo. I'll close by noting that one of the big problems is that when people think about body cam programs, they often use the same logic as underlies the fallacy that we need more gun ownership because a good guy with a gun could stop a bad guy with a gun. Rather than thinking through systemic consequences and examining data, people are often thinking of highly particularized scenarios where body cams could be beneficial. I would encourage people to think about this matter in terms of systemic impact. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Steve Verberg of District 16, to be followed by Julia Matthews, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe. Steve?
Good evening. I'm Steve Verberg. Thanks for giving me a chance to talk by providing this forum. I've lived in Madison for 22 years. I retired, but during my career, part of my job was investigating and understanding how police departments operate, including systemic racial biases and police abuse of authority. You know, in Madison, we've got a serious problem with racial disparities in arrest practices, something that doesn't get discussed very often around here for some reason. Now we've got these body-worn cameras. I'm urging you to vote against the proposed body-worn camera policy because it lacks important safeguards that are needed to protect our community and to keep these racial disparities in arrest practices from getting worse. Because the research shows that that's one of the main impacts of these things is that they hit marginalized communities with more and more prosecutions, including for low-level offenses. So when we think about police body-worn cameras, this industry has done a really good job of popularizing these things. We think about these big flashy cases where some wrongdoing by police or someone else was exposed. A lot of publicity for those things, but it's important to remember for every one of these isolated incidents that gets publicity, there's hundreds of thousands of other incidents of police cameras recording people in our communities. And what's happening is that this ongoing surveillance ends up worsening overpolicing of marginalized communities. That's one of the things I believe that the feasibility committee found out. Now, as you know, two years have passed, and the UW Law Professor, who led the committee, is impatient and willing to allow the police chief to discard the safeguards that the committee stipulated after months of painstaking research and debate. I don't understand that. I don't understand that impatience. The question for this council to me is, why did the feasibility committee think those safeguards were so important? What harm did they think would happen without the safeguards?
You have about 30 seconds.
Thank you. I haven't heard the police or the city attorney or advocates for body-worn cameras discuss this. So please reject this policy. Please ask the right questions. Please read the feasibility committee report and consider the harm that will come to this community from using this technology without safeguards. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Julia Matthews of District 12, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe, to be followed by Bob Schaefer. Julia?
Good evening, and thank you for the ability to make public comment tonight. First, I want to say I really appreciate Chief Barnes's focus on data and making that data much more available to the public through reports and regular presentations. I come from a clinical research background, and in that world, research documentation and data are held to a really high standard and are subjected to a lot of outside transparency, accountability, and ethical and data review. I wasn't able to find a document with the study design and study protocol. Has that been made available to the council? And will it be made available to the public? I also saw in a police civilian oversight meeting that Dr. Broderick Turner would be conducting all data analysis for the study and remembered meeting him at the Axon Public Meeting at Memorial Union in February of 2022. I know he is affiliated with Axon as a member of one of their boards. I also wasn't able to find this mentioned explicitly in any documentation about the pilot study. I now know the question of transparency and independence with him overseeing the data has been asked by a member of PCOB and an alder, but I wanted to express my concern as well and ask if any answers have been provided. I'm not trying to call Dr. Turner's integrity or academic expertise into question. He clearly is doing very important work with his lab, but disclosure of the relationship with Axon is important, and additional verification of the data analysis should be made available to the council and public. Especially with the city's existing and future budget constraints, the validity and vigor of this pilot study data are extremely important, as is the confidence that it is objective. My other concern is with the use of body cam footage for training purposes. At the Axon Public Meeting, a large focus of their presentation was on the use of footage for training primarily in mental health crisis situations. At the time, hearing that framing was very upsetting to me. Mental health crises that involve police can be some of the lowest and most vulnerable times for a person. The thought that video of that event could be used by the police department in perpetuity with no knowledge or consent of the civilians in the video doesn't seem right to me. In the policy document, it is mentioned that the police officer in the video had the ability to veto the video from being used in training, but there was no mention of informing or requesting consent from civilians. I think with these questions that have yet to be answered, it is important that the council asks those questions and gets those answers before approving any pilot study from going forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Bonnie Rowe of District 11, to be followed by Bob Schaefer, to be followed by Stephanie Bradley Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Yep. I won't take a lot of time because I think everybody knows that I'm for body cameras and have been all along. But I do want to say thank you to you all as leaders for putting a lot of emphasis on accountability and oversight of our police department. I do think it's important. I want to draw your attention to the things that even this body did before some of you were elected as alders, like the ad hoc committee that was put together to really do a comprehensive review of the Madison Police Department, which led to the OIR report, 177 recommendations that MPD could do to improve their policing in the community. Of course, one of those was to implement a body-worn camera pilot. Then there was a Quatron Center review, not necessarily going chronologically, but these are more like the reports I want to think of. That was commissioned out to a very well-renowned thing. And they recommended highly that our city would use body-worn cameras as a way of better coordinating and having a better response, especially in those sentinel protest events. The Office of the City Attorney recommends body-worn cameras, right? That's listed in the OIR report because it can factor into city litigation, or liability, I should say, liability and risk management. Then this body commissioned the Police Body-Worn Camera Feasibility Review Committee. I know that Charles was on there. I attended all their meetings. And they went ahead to recommend a body-worn camera program. Common Council voted April 19, 2021, to implement the program, as you know, but with some conditions. Recently, the Public Safety Review Committee, which is also an oversight mechanism, voted 5 to 1 in favor of the pilot project, which is kind of a new thing for PSRC to be on board of body cameras. And then last night, the Police Civilian Oversight Board and the Independent Monitor voted 6 to 2 in favor of the pilot moving forward. Such great oversight and accountability we have in our city that will only be aided by the evidence that will come through body camera footage. Funds of $83,000 were allocated in the capital budget, as you know. Chief Barnes is an expert in policing. He has implemented body cameras before and maybe one of the first department-wide. And you hired him as our chief, and I think we need to respect his judgment and leadership. Let's see.
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay. So I just think that we've done a lot. You guys have done a lot of research, putting things into place to give recommendations. And when every single one of those things points in the direction of moving forward with the 30-day or 90-day body-worn camera pilot project, I think you should just go with that. Every single thing has pointed to the implementation of this pilot. And this is after seeing the policy. So I do want to pass out a little handout as I walk off here, just so you can have it in front of you as you vote, a reminder that all of these things point to body-worn camera pilots.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Stephanie Bradley Wilson of District 18, to be followed by Keith Finley, to be followed by Dan Fitch. Stephanie, you're unmuted. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Bradley Wilson. I served at MPD from 1984 through January 2016. I worked in several capacities at MPD, and I retired as a lieutenant, working several years on the South Side. I found the final report of the model policy of the police body-worn camera and the feasibility studies that were connected with the report, as well as the memos by Chief Barnes, the city attorney's office, the proposed MPD city attorney's office, the proposed MPD policy very compelling. I support the pilot program for many of the same reasons listed in the original report. Body worn cameras is another tool that can be used to tell the story or part of the story about the interaction between officers and citizens. Body worn cameras tell the, won't tell the entire story, but it will give context to written and verbal reports by law enforcement and community members. I believe it would be unwise and irresponsible for the council not to approve the 90 day trial and then to have a rigorous discussion of the outcome of the pilot. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll try again for Keith Finley of District 9, or Dan Fitch of District 6, or Ally Bates of District 6, or Gregory Gabowski of Middleton. All right. Let me refresh. I don't have you on this item, but if you want to come and talk to the clerk, we can get you registered.
This is the clerk.
Alder Miate?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that Lou and Pastor and Judge Everett Mitchell is registered to speak.
Don't have either of them registered as wishing to speak, but if you want to register, we can stand informal.
Thank you.
Do you want to just go ahead and introduce yourself and then we can get the paperwork done? Yeah. You can actually go to either microphone.
Yeah, I'm already close now.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting me speak. I was told that I probably had to wait till three o'clock in the morning, so I appreciate it. I got two baby girls I would love to read books to. So I wrote a speech and I emailed it to all the alder persons, so if I don't get through the whole thing, please feel free to read it at your leisure. So first and foremost, thank you for continuing to listen to everyone's concerns for body worn cameras. It's hard for someone like me who is both a black man who has experienced negative police interactions and who is also a police officer to speak on any police related issues because there's an expectation that I have to choose a side. For this particular topic, there should be no debate. Body worn cameras benefit marginalized communities and the police. My frustration is that since I became a police officer for the city of Madison back in 2018, we have been talking about obtaining body worn cameras and still have yet to enact the pilot program. This conversation might predate me, and as Ms. Carter said, she's been doing it for about a decade. Growing up, I've heard over and over again that we need to keep the police accountable for their actions and that we need transparency. What better way to do that than to actually have the ability to see what the police are doing? How are they speaking to people in their interactions? How and why are they using force on a person? As a member of the community outreach team for Madison Police, when I've spoken to people across Madison about their opinions on body worn cameras, an overwhelmingly majority have stated that they want MPD to have the cameras. When I speak to colleagues about their opinions about body worn cameras, they want the policies and procedures in place that makes sense for everyone involved, but overall, they are in favor of having body worn cameras. As Chief Barnes mentions in his memo to the city, these are the following issues that the study seeks to address. When should officers be required to turn cameras on and off? Which members of an agency should be required to wear cameras? When should supervisors review camera footage? When should body worn cameras footage be shared with the public? How long should it be stored? How expensive the body worn camera programs are? Have body worn camera programs led to any change in the number of lawsuit settlements by municipalities or values of those settlements? Can body worn, can camera footage be part of the agency's early warning system? Can body worn cameras benefit the agency? How can using cameras support training and what unexpected challenges will we face when equipping your officers with body worn cameras? So when people try to argue their points of opposition to the pilot program, asking these same questions that the chief and the department wants to address, we're on the same page. Again, I ask, what is the holdup? Is it the cost? No, the money has already been allocated for the program. And if, when we move forward after the pilot program, in the long run, the cameras pay for themselves. And I've attached a link about a study done called Body Worn Cameras and Policing Benefits and Costs. The only thing preventing the pilot program from happening is the vote of the council. So I urge you to vote yes in support of MPD finally getting the opportunity to launch the pilot program. We are many years behind other departments our size or larger.
About 15 seconds.
Please vote yes so we can do right by the community members of Madison. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to go next, my apologies to Bob Schaefer of District 17, and then we'll go to Judge Mitchell. Bob, are you there?
I am, and thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, I can understand how things can be overlooked and, you know, I appreciate your pointing me as being lost in somewhere. Anyhow, I am here in support of the body worn cameras. When we consider our surrounding communities and, and the state of Wisconsin and the apparently large use of body cameras, that I think that, that it is worth the effort to see how they're used and to go through with the pilot program. Some of the people have brought up all kinds of various concerns with that, but that more people have been in favor of this. And that I think that one of the things that we are having a tendency is to overlook the tools that the police are asking to have the ability, their availability to use. So I think that in fairness and in fairness to the community, that we need to get some, with this pilot project, we need to get some experience of how they're used in Madison and what benefit or what problem that they might have. So rather than taking guesses, rather than presuming that they are going to be misused, let's have faith in the police department. Let's see what can be done. Let's give the officers the tool that they've been asking for and, and see what possibilities can be used to improve that or see if it's not a good idea. So I really suggest that with all of the amount of discussion that's been and the favorable votes that have been on this, that I strongly urge you to pass this, to vote on it, and to let's see where we go with it. I thank you, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Judge Mitchell from Sun Prairie.
Okay, how many minutes?
Three minutes.
In 2015, when Paul Heenan was murdered on Willy Street, shortly after that, 2015, Tony Robinson was killed in the same general area. I remember marching in the streets with, you know, Brandon Grayson and Black Lives Matter. We all stood in protest. We pulled our children down there, all the pastors organized vigilance, and one of the things we kept asking for was greater transparency at that time. At that time, the only resistance that we had to trying to get this was not the common counsel, but really was Mike Kovall, Chief Kovall at the time, who resisted our ability to try to move forward any kind of accountability with the police force at that time. I traveled with Dave Mahoney up to Washington DC to the PERS, which is the Police Educational Research Forum, where we looked at the broader categories, even at that time in 2015, 2016, about what are some model ways in which we can promote safety and accountability among policing. Body cameras was one of the top leading recommendations. Even the big chief in Philadelphia, who was leading police charges on changes and transformation of departments, was pushing for the transparency of body cams so that both the public and the police can be held accountable to those actions. We said during that time of Black Lives Matter that dead people don't talk. And hang up with Tony Robinson's case and his grandmother's been filing case after case is that you don't have that other interaction that happened between him and Matt Kenny that happened up in the upstairs as Tony was turning around and what happened there. All we have is a dash cam from, from, from Matt Kenny. That's all we ever had. We never heard, seen Tony's perspective. And over and over again, the idea of body cams is not a panacea to solve the interaction and difficulties of policing. That's not the way it's supposed to do, but it does give a model, a tool to provide some transparency, some training for law enforcement so that we can know how they are interacting with our community, and then they can use those interactions and to hold other officers accountable. Not to give this as an opportunity really does weaken our criminal justice system. And I know I'm not a city in Madison, so it's not my tax dollars going into this, but I can tell you as a person who's fought in this city, fought for the betterment of this city, worked hard to make our city continue to be progressive, we need to add this tool to the rest of the tools that we can use to make sure that both our community and the police, that, that monitor our communities and our kids have the tools necessary. And if Chief Barnes is a police officer actually asking for a tool to hold them accountable, I just don't understand what the hang up is. So I can't tell you vote yes or no, but I can tell you as someone who's historically been in this fight and working with this for a long time, this is something we all have been craving for, asking for, fighting for, marching for, speaking for, giving our hearts and our time to transform these systems for.
20 seconds.
And not to give him the things that he needs for this moment really does give, sets us back rather than continue to allow Madison to lead forward. So just want to give y'all a little historical note. Thank you all so much, and appreciate everyone's your service to the community.
Thank you, Judge. Just want to note, we had two pastors speak, and both of them kept within the time limit. And my apologies to the council, we do keep having people show up online. So we're going to go now to Dan Fitch of District 6. Dan?
Howdy, folks. Thanks for having me. I'll keep this brief. I mean, you're going to hear every side of the story from everyone tonight, but I, I just feel like we should not be giving our cops more money. I don't know if anybody here read the Minneapolis, the recent report from Minneapolis, but they're not that different of a city from Madison. And the things their police force did with their cameras on is shocking enough, I can't even imagine what's happening when they have the ability to turn them off or make, you know, if they're in control, they're going to use it to control people, and it's not going to be used for police accountability. I just, I don't believe it's ever going to be used for police accountability. Prove me wrong. Thanks, folks. I yield my time.
Thank you. All right. I'm just going to call one more time for Keith Finley, Ally Bates, or Gregory Gabowski. See none of them either in the room or online, so I believe that is all the folks wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants tonight? Alder Harrington McKinney.
I'd like to have Judge Mitchell come back, please.
Judge Mitchell, if you don't mind. Go ahead, Alder.
Judge, what is the definition of pilot?
So is it something that you see how it works, and then you give an assessment of how it works, and then you come back and if it works, it doesn't, you get a chance to measure the benefits of something for a very short period of time, and then you can decide whether or not you want to move it from a pilot to implement it to something long term.
My second question is, you're a pastor of a congregation.
Yes.
And in your, in your membership, when a member comes and talks about a child that's been lost to gun violence, what is the question that that sobbing mother always asks?
I think a lot of the, we have a group in our church called, you know, unfortunately, I have a number of mothers in our congregation who've lost their children to gun violence. And so they're always asking why, you know, what we could have done better, what happened to my son, what happened to my child? And I think the grief that they have is not being able to actually have any kind of ultimate solutions for the pain of why they had to lose their son and bury their sons. And I've, they've lost a range of, from 15 year old babies, mothers who've lost their 15 year old sons, all the way up to like 26, 28, 29 year olds. And I think the overarching pain that they have is not knowing what could have been done or what should have been done to help take that gun out of the person who shot them or killed them and give them an opportunity to have that child back.
Okay, thank you. So was there any additional information that you wanted to share outside of your three minutes?
Well, I was glad that the caller brought up the idea of the, what happened in Minneapolis because that was one of those, you know, seeing the body cameras did not, like I always say, did not stop the violence that happened with George Floyd. But I think even the President's George Floyd Policing Act really was one of those acts that really looked at comprehensive ways to improve policing. And I think that George Floyd Policing Act, one of those recommendations was the implementation of body cams as a way to bring about transparency in all those communities. There was a documentary on Vox, that I believe Vox, and I want to say it's like almost like an Alabama community or something like that, where they were really promoting the idea of body cams because it helped bring the community interactions with policing, the negative interactions down. And so, you know, when we look for statistics, yes, you're right, the caller was right, it's not going to solve the act. I mean, that officer stood on Matt Kenny's neck, but again, I always say that even though I have not been a fan of policing in our communities and how we've been policed, to equate policing to Matt Kenny, who was a convicted murderer, not Matt Kenny, but yeah, I don't even want to do, I don't want to put the dude's name in my memory box. He killed George Floyd and his other officers assisted in that process. The other officers in Memphis who killed that boy, that's not representative of police officers who work every day. It is representative of what we don't do when we give direct accountability to the kind of policing that we want in those communities. And the results are what you see. The brutality is what you see. The pain is what you see. So it is just a tool. It does not end the discussion of what we do to put practices in place that support, you know, leaders like Sean Barnes, who may be trying to bring that new era of policing in place, but they're also begging for these tools to be able to do so. So the caller was right. Does it solve it? No. Did they have body cams when they did Memphis? Did they have body cams in Minneapolis? Yes. Did it solve it? No. But at the end of the day, we give great accountability because now, where we could not get convictions before, and I need y'all to understand that, we couldn't, you couldn't get convictions of officers before. Now you can. That man was convicted, those officers in Memphis would be convicted, and that is a sign of true accountability and transparency because those, those new cameras give us a way to be able to get those convictions in ways that we had never, ever received before in the history of bringing this kind of stuff to court and this kind of stuff to justice.
Thank you. End of questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Miate, questions?
One more for.
Sorry, Judge, you might stand up here for a minute.
Just a quick question. I just, how do you think that cameras in your courtroom would benefit? And do you think it will cut down on possible court time as far as litigation and so forth?
I'm, you know, not, every judge shares his perspective. I'm big on transparency. I'm often remiss that nobody knows what I do as a judge, right? That we can sit back there, just kind of do everything, make any kind of judgments. Nobody knows. Nobody asks us questions. I'm literally down the street, but you wouldn't know what I do. You wouldn't know how I'm ruling on people's lives because there's no transparency whatsoever. And when we see the impact of criminal justice reform, it's because nobody actually knows the microwaves in which people are microaggressed and treated in these big spaces throughout our county. Only time we get any kind of media attention, if it's on the news and somebody wants to come in and bring a camera to our courtroom, but for the most part, I've been a judge for over seven years, you probably don't know what I do. And yet I have the most important job, addressing our children and our families and our young people throughout my entire career that I've been a judge. Nobody knows. So I believe cameras bring about a level of transparency that is necessary for us to be able to make sure that those who have power are using their power correctly. And if they're not using their power correctly, then they have mechanisms to get them removed. You have mechanisms to get people removed, or you can have people run or elect them out. But without that, you really don't know what people do. And that's why I think this level of transparency is something that we've been calling for and asking for because we want y'all to see. I need y'all to see. We want you all to be able to see and hold us accountable for things that we don't do right.
And one last question. You know, you probably talked to other judges, and you know, from what I've heard, and you correct me if this, this is something we might have heard or being a judge know of, in OWI cases, you have the dashboard that capture the visualization of what happens. Can you, by experience or talking to other judge, how the visualization of seeing that compared to a body camera, how, how would this be? I mean, because I've heard of cases being overturned by looking at the dash cam. I mean, Tony Robinson, like you said, you couldn't see what happened in that corridor. How important is body cams in this situation?
I would just say, just as a, as a modicum of evidence, like we think about what is evidence, how it could be used. I mean, dash cam gives a perspective from the car. So yes, it's good for OWI situations, but think about when they go inside the house, right? The moment that that door is closed inside the house and those mental health moments come up, you don't know. I think about that case, you know, you see cases on news all the time where mental health crises are happening inside the house and, you know, just the interaction, how you talking, how, how are you building? Are you deescalating this situation? Are you escalating how your words being used? All of those interactions, you're not going to get from a dash cam, even if there is audio connected to the dash cam that brings that audio back. You're not going to catch that. The audio still may not. The audio still may not catch the full weight of the conversation or the interaction facial and all the things that could go towards supporting either officer's perspective or also the individual's perspective in that moment. So all of that is important evidence for people to be able to see and make. I remember as a young prosecutor, you know, I had a situation where I read a police report and the officer had said a whole bunch of things in the police report that made me look at the individual and say, man, that was horrible, that made sense. And then so I was trying to make sure that the report mirrored the dash cam, so I could make sure it mirrored. I looked at the police report, I looked at the dash cam, I was like, hold on, this don't look nothing like what you just put in that report. And I held that officer accountable in that stand, dismissed that charge, sent that person home, because it didn't match, right? That level of accountability, that transfer, that, that, the transparency is what is necessary to sometimes make sure that not only police have what they need, but prosecutors also have the information they need necessary to make sure that they're finding justice for our communities. All right?
Thank you.
Yeah, Judge, hang on there for a minute. Alder Madison, is it questions for the judge?
Yes, Mayor.
Alder Madison.
Just a quick question, because you talked about the body-worn cameras as a tool. What I would love for you or one of the previous officers or former officers to talk about financial resources as a tool. So what kind of financial resources are the families that most impacted, especially the ones coming to your courtroom? What are some of the financial resources or resources that they're lacking?
Yeah, so I would say one of the things that we've been always asking for is mental health services, transportation assistance, housing. Those are kind of the three main areas that a lot of my families are searching for right now. So how do we make sure they have a place to live? How do we make sure that they have adequate transportation to get to the things that they need to get to? I think we are, I think I'm learning a lot about this new bus rapid transit experiment, right? That's an experiment that I don't think is impact, that's impacting those families in a very adverse way, because they can't get the jobs, they're standing at bus stations too long, but yet we invested in that tool and I don't know if it's serving us. And then access to mental health services. So those are the, coming to big things that we have seen. I promise you, if I had affordable housing, if we had, you know, transportation assistance, and if we had, you know, access to mental health services so that we could get them anytime on basis, we wouldn't have so many kids stealing cars and then escalating their behavior to put popping guns, that people leaving their cars and using those guns to shoot into people's houses all throughout the city and throughout our county.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wiheli, is it for the judge?
Yes, for the judge.
Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you, Judge, for being here. Throughout the, tonight's presentation, we have heard, you know, so many words, racial biases, racial disparities. This will harm black community, lack of accountability, transparency, oversight for black people. And yet we have many black leaders from the community who are coming in support of this. Alex Rackett from, he's a black officer, Pastor Allen from Mount Zion, NWSCP wrote us a letter, yourself, of course, who is very experienced in criminal justice system, former Alder Sherry Carter. So what is the disconnect, you know, when we have this group saying that there's, there's no accountability and it's going to harm and hurt the black people, and yet you leaders are here in support of this? So I'm just wondering, what is, what is the disconnect? And of course, Chief Barnes, who has been really, you know, experienced, who had lived experience and the research and all that, who is in support of this. And yet when we hear from the callers that they are seeing all this, you know, nuances, where is the disconnect?
I mean, I don't, I mean, I can't speak for all those individuals. I can just say that for someone who was on the streets night after night, I was in, on the north side, police stations in the freezing cold, when nobody was there, when there were no cameras, and I don't know who these leaders are that's talking for this and saying this kind of stuff about the community, but I know where I was at. And I know what we were fighting for, and I know what we pushing for. I got called all kinds of names from all kinds of ends, the in this, and when I, when we were blocking streets, trying to make sure that our police force was giving us the things we need to be held accountable. So I don't know where they were at at that time, but I know where we were at, working hard with Freedom Inc. and M. and all the grassroots organizations pushing for that level, sitting inside of, you know, I was sitting inside of rooms with, you know, the mayor, former mayor, and Chief Koval, when they were being disrespectful to those leaders, because I was, I was the leader for the elder, young, gifted and black. So I was the one in those rooms, sitting along with the mayor, being disrespected, having to tell the advocates that we still going to push, we still going to fight, getting threatening emails and threatening stuff left on my car because we were pushing for greater police accountability at that time. So I put my family's risk, I put my life at risk, I put all that stuff online because it was right. So I don't know what a disconnect is, but I can tell you from someone who was on the ground, who stays on the ground, who stayed in the fight, who been in the fight for somebody, this is just one small piece of a big puzzle that we were fighting for. Anybody else who, you know, anybody else who may, you know, ascribe to push against that, I'm asking you where your receipts were at when there were no cameras? When we were fighting for this stuff out in the cold, when, you know, you know, getting cussed out, being talked to crazy, where, where were your receipts at then? Because this, this is part of what we were fighting for then. And at that time, we had a police chief that just was, he was pushing against that at every turn he could get, using all of his power, using all of his rank and file officers, those, those union officers, to push against the ability to transform our community's policing to something that made sense for the rest of the county. They wouldn't do that. Madison was the outlier in that conversation. So I don't know where they were at. I could just say, I know where we were at in trying to have these meetings, trying to push for this agenda. And at that time, we didn't have a whole bunch of support coming to us. What churches weren't behind us, what place people weren't trying to support us, but we still believed it was right then, and I still believe it's right now.
One more question. And from your own experience, this pilot or body-worn camera will not harm or hurt the community?
I think any tool can be used to hurt or harm anybody. It is how we are used. If this was maybe in some other community, I mean, y'all, I mean, Madison is supposed to be the cream of the crop in terms of your ability to have insight and wisdom and knowledge to be able to take what is piloted and be able to pull it through an analysis that makes sense. I don't trust, I don't trust tools, I trust you. And I trust each one of yours ability to have discretion and intellect to be able to move an agenda and pay attention to the nuances of every situation. It's just a tool. That's how you use that tool. You can use a hammer to build up a whole kingdom, or you can use it to tear it down. This is what I'm hoping that we can use this to build up our community so we can actually meet the needs of a growing community and to ensure that officers who can harm our community are not still be in positions to be hired by, you know, our, our city and paying taxes in our community.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers, is it for the judge? Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Judge, for being here. Conversation with you a few years ago actually changed my mind on body-worn cameras when you mentioned that on more than one occasion, dash cam video or in other jurisdictions, body-worn camera video did not comport with the police report against a juvenile. And the absence of that footage, you raised the question, who are you going to believe? The cop or the kid?
Yep.
And so that you thought it was, would level the playing field. I have a question for you, a couple regarding the sharing of this information. How important, in your mind, will it be that this, this footage is shared with, say, the Police Civilian Oversight Board in a timely manner?
I think, I think the whole point of a pilot is to really assess how you get all of those elements that you're concerned about, like how quickly does this information need to go to the civilian oversight board? Because, you know, police can't have it both ways. It can't be like, we want you to fund this tool, but then, you know, hold out on the ability to get the information, right? So you either want, one or the other, but you can't have both. So I think we have to work to make sure that the, the tool is used to be, to build the transparency that we want. And I think, you know, we are in a state that values open records, public records, open records. And I think you use this pilot to tweak out the pieces that don't make sense. How, you know, what do we do with confidential, you know, mental health information if somebody who doesn't mean good wants that information, there's open records, what do we do with that? How do you then assess, you know, what stuff released, how timely to release it, who do you release it to? Those are very important questions, and I think that's what you use a pilot to be a flesh out. I don't think you know it until you actually get it, right? What, what kind of information you looking for? What stuff? Theoretically, you can say, you know, mental health stuff, those conversations, can that be harmful? We don't know. And who should have them? That stuff you have to flesh out. But, you know, you can't have it both ways. I think transparency is the, is the, is the, benefits everyone in this process, especially while you're trying to pilot what works best for the city in, in, in community with all these other jurisdictions that have already implemented this policy. I think Middleton, Sun Prairie, I know they all have, and Oregon has them as well, so, so it makes sense.
It does. And as a follow-up, Dan, with your understanding of the criminal justice system as a whole, how important will it be that this footage be shared with, say, public defenders as quickly as it's shared with district attorneys?
Actually, I think the, the moment that it is shared with a prosecutor has to be shared with defense attorneys. So there really isn't no, there isn't a lag. They have to be shared at the same time. So the moment the prosecutor gets it, the moment the discovery motion is filed, that information is supposed to be shared as quickly as with them as possible, so that they have, there's information that could be shared to lift up the charging documents, but the moment that it is charged, the moment that it passes prelim, and after it has passed prelim, which is the, you know, the first stage of it, that discovery request can be made and they're supposed to match up so that all of that information gets sent out, so people can have a right to a fair trial, know what information is being used against them.
Thank you.
It should not be held open, and I don't.
So you would advise this is something we should monitor during this pilot, that this information is shared in a timely manner with the PCOB, with not only the prosecution, but also the defense?
I think transparency is always good, and I think, you know, as best as it can be to disclose information as quickly as possible so that people have, especially what you mentioned, like they're criminally charged. I mean, that criminal charge elevates, especially if the body cam footage is used as the thing that has supported the charging of the individual on the prosecutor's side, which goes in the C cap. And once it goes in the C cap, everybody should be able to have the information that is going to be used against them after prelim. I keep saying after prelim because people need to understand that there's a nuance. Just because a person is charged, they don't get information right off the bat.
Right.
It's not till it's bound over for trial, which means that the state has to present evidence that a felony probably happened, they probably committed. Then it gets bound over into other proceedings, but not before then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Mianze, is it for the judge again?
No. Or Alex.
Okay, so you can go. Thank you very much, Judge. We appreciate it. All right, Alder Mianze.
Yes, sir.
Well, given that, I want to ask Officer Lou this, but, well, given that you're retired and all, we all have jobs that we've gone to probably and said, you know what? This person probably doesn't deserve to continue working here or, or whatever. So during your tenure as an officer, especially with body cameras, can you talk about an incident that somebody's gotten fired due to misconduct, seeing them body cameras?
Yes, I was an internal affairs investigator for a few years while I was a police officer in Greensboro. So yes, I've seen several domestic violence, individuals be fired because of their actions. And I'll give you an example with, let's say we did not have the body-worn cameras and officers respond to a domestic violence situation, and it's the officer that's the suspect in the case. They arrest him, they see the bruise, they take her interview, he goes to jail, he gets out. Well, now she doesn't want to complain anymore. She doesn't want to say anything. That happens. That happens in, to regular people, officers. She doesn't want to complain. We have no body camera footage, so it's hard to prove the case if we don't have any footage, any video of her stating anything. She doesn't want to complain, she don't want to say anything. But if we have body-worn camera footage, and maybe the judge can speak further to it, that footage seals the deal. Whether they go to court or not, that officer no longer has the job. And that's what I've seen as an investigator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. So Alder Bennett, questions for registrants?
Yes, and my apologies for having my camera off. As a, can I ask a call question to the previous registrant?
The gentleman who just spoke?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Would you come back? Go ahead, Alder.
Okay. So just as a follow-up to the example that you provided, you know, I, I think as a survivor and many other survivors can relate to not wanting to, like, press charges against their abusers. How is it fair then, in that situation, that we still prosecute them, even though it might harm, like, the safety and well-being of that survivor or the person, of the person who was the victim in that specific situation?
They have, they're the victim, if they don't want.
Like, isn't there unintended consequences of, like, continuing to do a prosecution in that situation?
It can't be in both instances. If we do not prosecute, it could be.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic? I, I'm, because I'm on Zoom, so I'll talk to you.
Sorry, there you go.
Okay, yes, it could be intended consequences on both sides. If they are, if they don't want to prosecute and we prosecute anyway, in North Carolina, we had a law, we, we continue the process, because we saw a lot of people coming to court and they refused to say anything because they're scared, but we continued to move forward. I don't know what the cases are here, because I'm not a law enforcement officer here, but there's intended consequences on both sides. They can be, well, we let them go, we don't prosecute, he can still continue his bad behavior, and one day she could, he could kill her or him.
Right.
So I, I think the best.
Isn't it then the other way around too? Like, if you do prosecute.
Alder, I, I think this is going a little bit astray from the, the matter at hand. The question that Alder Mianze had asked was regarding whether or not officers had been fired as a result of having body worn cameras. So it's, we're not really talking about prosecutions, we're talking about internal discipline.
Oh, I, I appreciate the redirection. I, I don't know, I saw the connection, especially with how the body-worn camera pilot is laid out, specifically in relation to, like, the things that talk about survivors or victims of domestic abuse and sexual assault. But that's okay, I digress.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you. All right. Now I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to ask questions, so that will bring us to the end of public comment. And we will go then to item 60. I know it feels like we've been on item 60 the entire time. But on item 60, which is Legis 78341, authorizing the implementation of a body-worn camera pilot program, President Curry, a motion, please.
Can you help me? This would be appropriate to move an alternate or not yet?
Let's get, let's do it separately. Let's get the, the main motion on the table, and then you can move an alternate.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. And let's just briefly pause to see if there are questions for staff. Not, Alder Vitter?
So, so questions for staff before the alternate is moved, or can that come after the alternate is moved?
Either way.
Okay.
But we have two other Alders wishing to ask questions of staff, so.
Okay. Okay. So we heard from some of the folks tonight that it's possible that individuals' footage might be used in training without their knowledge. So the question is, is do we have a mechanism in place to protect individuals from disclosure in training videos if they don't want that information disclosed?
So we have attorneys and the chief present. I'm not sure who wants to answer that question.
I can answer it.
Chief, go ahead.
First of all, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on what I think is a very important step in the process. So, you know, I think the, the assumption is that we use information without a person's permission. Public, public records law will not allow us to do that. We would need the express written consent of anyone that was in that video if we were to share it with someone who's not a principal in it. So the public records law would cover that, we believe. We have, or I have never used video without the person's permission. I was a hostage negotiator many years ago. And when we would have a successful negotiation, we would have to get the, or through City Legal, the written permission from the person in the video, or the recording actually, that they were okay with us using it as a training. I've been to numerous trainings around the country where people share videos of the person who was in distress or the positive outcome for learning purposes. That cannot be done without the express written consent of the person who was in it. And I think that's general practice and best practice.
Great, thank you. Next question, how will you track staff time needed for implementation of the pilot?
So that's going to be a part of the pilot. There were metrics on page 11 of the feasibility committee report that I moved to the proposal, the research proposal. It doesn't belong in the policy because the policy is for the officers to regulate their conduct. As far as the metrics, they are in the research proposal. And my plan is the researcher in conjunction with the independent monitor, because I had an opportunity to discuss some of that with some of the leadership. And they expressed concerns about MPD collecting data. I understand that. And so I think that is the best route. I had a meeting scheduled today with the independent monitor to discuss just that, but we had to move it till tomorrow. But he's certainly on board with helping out with that process.
Okay, and my last question is, will you allow officers to review footage prior to writing reports?
Yes, because it is a note and is very important that it is accurate. Earlier this week, I had several media reach out to me and they wanted to do a story about where were we in this process. They all recorded my interview. And then they referred to that before they wrote the story because accuracy is important. And so if we have a tool to ensure accuracy, whether the car was red or whether the car was blue, I think it is important that we be accurate in our reporting. But what the policy does do, it reserves the right for us not to show a video to someone who is then accused of something egregious. And so if a person reports two days later that, hey, something was taken from me in the process of my arrest, we would not show the officer that video prior to doing that. In addition to that, if there is a critical incident, we of course reserve the right because then, of course, according to, I believe it's Act 79, the DCI will be the proprietors of the investigation. And so we would not show that to them in that case.
So then as a follow-up question, then how will you compare what then is happening in the pilot to the rest of the city, considering that the rest of the city doesn't have access to the body worn cameras? So you're going to have one set of officers able to write reports with body camera footage and one not. And so now you basically have voided your comparator. So how will you manage that?
Yeah, well, they both can now because we have dash cams. And so most of our arrests do occur outside. And so if an officer is outside and they're in front of their vehicle, we, I reviewed one recently, in fact, Monday. So the officers can do that now. So it really doesn't change. I don't know what we would be measuring, other than if we're trying to measure whether or not an officer can clearly remember everything that happened without the aid of a body worn camera. But I'm not really sure what that measurement is intended to actually show us.
So, thank you, just thinking about when we think about like doing clinical trials, which this is theoretically supposed to be, although we recognize it's relatively imperfect. You try to control as many variables as possible. And so this, this does seem like a flaw, if I could just say that, in the design of the study, that you would have a comparator that would, that you would have a variable that you're not holding constant across the control and the intervention. So just if you consider that and put that into the consideration of the research design, thanks.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. If we indeed, I don't know what the measurement would be, whether, whether or not, because they do that now, right? So we don't have body worn cameras now. So if, I'm trying to figure out what the measurement is. It sounds like we're measuring whether or not they can accurately remember everything that happens. I don't know, because again, they're writing reports now. They've been doing it for, you know, tens of years because we do not have body worn cameras now. So they do have to go off their notes and recollection. And that's what they do anyway, actually. The officers have notepads. We teach them that way. And I don't know, at least from my experience with body worn cameras, I cannot think of a lot of times where officers actually looked at the video before they wrote their reports. They usually go by the notes that they have and the notes that they take down.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers, questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor. And a question for the chief. Following up my questions to Judge Mitchell about the sharing of information and the testimony that independent monitor Robert Copley gave at last night's meeting, he mentioned that he was in conversations with you and felt some degree of confidence that details would be worked out with the sharing of information with the independent monitor and the PCOB. Would you care to comment on that, please?
Sure, you know, Monitor Copley has been very busy. He's trying to stand up a new department, as you know. We sent him a data sharing MOU in November of last year. And you can imagine that he's been, been very busy. We have not received the feedback to sign that. But again, it depends on, and I hate to say it depends, but it does depend on what is he asking for? Is he asking for information because of an investigation? Is he asking for information because he or she or someone is in, or they is in principle in it? So the sharing of information, according to public records law, depends on who's the requister and why they are requesting, if there's no MOU. And so I guess I would need an example of what you're talking about because, again, I think that, number one, we're talking about a pilot and not full implementation. But number two, it also depends on the system that you have. And so if we go with the system that I'm familiar with, that has upload and a login, he could just go on whenever he wants to and log in and look at the video. I would not need to share the information with him. So it is kind of dependent on the system. We really don't, or we try and hopefully we won't get a system where we have to burn CDs. I've been through that in 2012 and I'm telling you now, it is, I can't go down that road again. And so it would have to be a web base where we can give them, give him a login and he can go in and see whatever it is he needs to see. But again, it depends on the nature and why he wants to see that video.
Well, I'm a little troubled by the nature and the why he wishes to see that video. But, because I don't think that the open records law prevents us from having parallel sharing of information. You can voluntarily choose to share with the PCOB. But I would, I would take on good faith that you intend to work these things out with the independent monitor and the PCOB. Regarding sharing of this footage with public defenders, can you comment on that? Because there was, there's been a critique of your, some of the stipulations in the pilot, that there might be a time lag, a significant time lag in sharing some of the footage with defensive attorneys as opposed to prosecution.
Yeah, it really doesn't work that way. As the judge clearly articulated, they have to get the information at the same time it's discoverable. And what would normally happen is the district attorney would ask us for the prosecution summary, which means that this case is going to trial. When that happens, we have to turn over any and all notes associated with that. And those are then turned over to them. I think we're thinking kind of in terms of like a hard copy, but the system doesn't work that way anymore. Everyone who's a court officer has a login. And when there's a case number associated with the case, it goes into the login. And so if the district attorney knows that case 12345 is associated with, you know, the people versus whoever, that district attorney then gets to log in and see the video at the same time. So to be honest with you, I think it would speed up the process. I don't think it would slow the process down at all. And in my experience, most of the time, DAs and defense attorneys will review those periodically when they have cases that come across their desk. But there are times where they don't look at them at all, to be honest with you.
One last question. There has been the suggestion that body worn cameras will lead to the increased prosecution of low level offenses. How, how do you see this pilot providing us the necessary data to track that element?
Yeah, well, I think one of the things that the body worn camera feasibility committee did very well is that they included a very important section that states that just because a police officer wears a body worn camera, he or she do not lose their discretion to give people alternative actions or what we call a break. And I think that has to be, be clear. Also, you have to be careful about giving research questions, you know, to officers where, whereas they may know the answer to it. Because we don't want officers going, well, you know, I'm wearing a body worn camera. I'll give them a break. You don't want to do that. And I think the randomization of it will help with that a little bit, trying to see what the officers do. To be honest with you, that's a very difficult thing to measure because not all arrests are discretionary. We think about arrests, all arrests, as if it's the officer's, as if it's the officer's sole decision. And that's not the case. And so unless we're going to, and we should, begin to disaggregate that data so that we know which arrests are purely officer discretion, because that's what we're talking about here, and which arrests are not. Because if someone says, you know, I was in, you know, a downtown bar and someone inappropriately touched me, I would expect that officer to hold that person accountable for doing that action, whether they were in a body worn camera or not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, questions for staff?
Yes, thank you so much. So from the, from previous meetings that you presented at, I recall you making it very clear that from this pilot, it is not to help us make a decision about like whether or not we want to do full implementation. I hope I'm reciting that correctly. But can you please explain more to us about like what your hopes of, like what we get out of it, out of this pilot program?
Yes, thank you, Alder Bennett. That's an excellent question and point. I think some people think that you can do a pilot and the pilot's going to say, you absolutely have to have this or you absolutely do not need this. And there's been so many questions about body worn cameras in this community. How much does it actually cost? I've heard estimates as high as $14 million, which is kind of frightening to me. But we need to have clear information about what the process or what the pilot, excuse me, what a full implementation would look like, what vendorship would look like, what data would look like. These things are very, very important. Science and data is that. There's descriptive data, which I think most of our data will be. And then there's inferential data, like Alder Vitterver was talking about. But it will not tell you whether or not we need this. I fully, if you had to ask me what hypothesis, I would say, I would say that at the end of the pilot, at the end of the pilot process, the community is going to say, we trust the Madison Police Department. They do a great job. Give them everything they need, but they don't need body worn cameras because they're doing an excellent job. But it may not. We don't know. Science and data is just that, Alder Bennett. You know, I went to the doctor recently and they told me I need to lose weight and stop eating so much cheese. I totally disagree with that. But again, that's just the science of what the doctor was trying to tell me.
Well, Wisconsin will do that to you.
The food is good. I can't, I'm just going to tell you, it is, it is good to me.
Something. So, okay, so that was on that question. Now also, can you speak towards the, like disaggregating information by race and slash ethnicity? I know that from the body worn camera feasibility study or committee, that was a main topic was like, will this increase arrests, especially for people of color? So like, will we be able to, or not increase arrests, or increase prosecutions? So can you explain to us if you will be able to track that data?
I don't know. We're not responsible for prosecutions. There's a myriad of reasons why a case is successful, why a case is not successful. I think we have a very successful prosecution rate for the cases that we do take to trial. And so, you know, I don't know the answer to that question. I do believe in being accurate in what we do. I do believe in making sure that we're fair in the administration of justice. I do believe in ensuring that if we can exonerate someone or vindicate someone, that we do that. In fact, that's actually a part of the investigative process. If someone is saying they're not responsible for it, we have an obligation to ensure that we, we look at their, the reasoning why they're saying they're not responsible. That's one that I don't know right offhand how I would measure that.
Okay, okay. Interesting. And then lastly, to Alder Vitterver's point, I understand that officers reviewing the body worn camera video, I mean, is something that was in, one of the few things that was in direct opposition to, to the committee's report. And I'm wondering, like, would you be willing to somehow make a control, like Alder Vitterver was saying, like, have 50% of the officers have the ability to review body worn camera footage and then 50% of the officers do not need to do so?
Well, because the policy doesn't contain the actual research study, I think you're right. You know, again, we're talking about 90 days and the randomization. I think we could do that, Alder Bennett. I think you make a, and you and Alder Vitterver makes a very good point. You know, if you're asking my hypothesis, I don't think it's going to make a difference because we trained them anyway to be good observers. We trained them to use their notepads to take down information. And we could have a control group of officers who do not review body worn camera footage prior to writing a report. And then those, but I don't know what differences would be significant. Would it be significant that, okay, the car was blue, but I thought it was red? Or would it be significant that, you know, the person actually committed more crimes than we thought they initially did? And so I think that I can certainly talk with Dr. Turner at some point to see what has been done in the past. Again, you know, there are limitations. We won't have the answer to absolutely everything. But my intention was, at the successful completion of this resolution, to give folks an opportunity to talk about what we can and what we can't do with the pilot. I didn't want to get too much into it because as a scientist, I would kind of wrap myself into it. But again, after talking to some of the leadership, I think they want a little bit more independent view of it.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Slack, you had your hand up, but you put it down again?
Yes, Alder Bennett, I was going to suggest the same thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Slack. Alder Govindarajan, questions?
Yes, a lot of these might be either for the chief or attorney. So this one will be for the chief, I guess. When will be like the earliest opportunity for officers to view the videos, the video footage?
Tell me, what do you, what do you mean by that?
So let's say I'm an officer and I get called to a scene. And then I'm going to fill out my report. When would be the earliest opportunity for me to view the video footage?
Well, it depends on what systems we pilot. But the system that I'm familiar with, that we had, you could look at it on your phone or you could send it to a supervisor. We used it to, to look at crime scenes so that we did not contaminate crime scenes once the original officer went through. Detectives got there, we could hold that crime scene and not contaminate it. We would simply log in from our phones or from our laptops and then look at what the officer looked at so that we can clearly articulate where to step, where not to step. So depending on the system, if we get systems that we can have a login, cloud-based, we should be able to do that fairly, fairly quickly.
Okay. When would be the earliest opportunity for someone involved in the incident to be able to complain about an officer or submit a complaint?
You can complain about an officer anytime. We've had people complain while on scene. We had people complain on the way to the police station. So every officer or every employee has an obligation to report a complaint. You can do that in person, you can do that online. One of the things that we changed since I've been here is that we've moved our complaint process to the very front of the, our website. And so it's under my name now. That was a suggestion that was made by the Public Safety Review Committee. So we did make that change. You can send an email, you can complain any way you want, or you can give a compliment as well.
When would be, when would an incident be considered a critical incident?
A critical incident is an incident that involves. A critical incident is an incident that involves serious injury, serious bodily harm, or death at the hands of a police officer. And when that happens, we're supposed to call an outside agency. And, and in most cases, unless they were involved, if it was some joint operation, but in most cases, it's going to be DCI, the Division of Criminal Investigations for the state.
Okay. Would an officer in either a critical incident or a incident that results in some kind of complaint be able to view the footage prior to the footage, prior to the complaint being filed, or before it's considered a critical incident?
Yeah, with the critical incident, the answer would be no. DCI would come and they would take control of all evidence, including the officer's handgun, if it was a handgun, or whatever that was used in that particular case. So they wouldn't have access to it. Involving a complaint, it depends on when the complaint is filed. If the complaint is filed two weeks after the incident, it's possible that the officer could have already reviewed the, the incident. We have complaints that are filed two years later. And so any, anyone at any time can file a complaint against a police officer.
Okay. With the, with that, I can kind of like understand why it is problematic maybe to let a police officer see the footage ahead of time prior to completing, completing their reports, especially if there might be a complaint. The next couple of questions have to do-
I'm sorry, you, you said it was, I didn't catch that.
It could be problematic in that sense if a police officer could view the footage prior to a complaint being filed.
How so?
This is, I feel like that's-
Chance for Alders to ask a question. I don't feel like that's a question.
Was that a question?
That's fair. Okay, I'll move on to my next question.
What?
This has to do with, oh my goodness, it's recommendation 7A. Just so you get the chance to read that as well. It's with retention of body worn camera footage. So from my understanding from this, the department is complying with that, where if there is no, it shall, it shall be permanently deleted after six months from the department who captured the footage, I guess. If there is an investigation lasting longer than six months, will that footage still be retrievable in any way?
Of course. If it's part of an active investigation, I believe it's like 99 years.
Okay. And like you said earlier, if someone complains two years later and it results in an investigation, would that body cam or footage be available in any way?
If it was related to an investigation, yes.
Can you explain what that, can you go in depth about that a bit?
Sure. Usually when we interact with people, if there is an arrest or a report that's made, that becomes a part of, of a record. And if there's dash cam footage or notes, those are or have to be preserved according to state law.
Okay, thank you. And then one more specific recommendation here. Jumping back to recommendation 3A, Roman numerals, I believe nine, 3A9. This is about conversations among law enforcement personnel that are not participated in by civilians. Can, you don't have to record if it's just a law enforcement officer talking to another law enforcement officer, for example. Would that, so would that apply for officers in the scene?
Yeah, that's the case now. That's what we do now with, with arbitrator video. So if officers are, that's consistent with what we have now.
So I was talking to a professor who's basically a guru, far as I'm concerned, in criminal justice, and he considered this to be a little bit problematic because the conversations that a law professor, or sorry, a law enforcement officer might have with another law enforcement officer, even if a civilian isn't in that situation specifically, might, it's a very information-rich environment right there, where a defense attorney might really want to see that conversation take place. It is a transfer of knowledge. And I think it is, it could be a little bit problematic where that, if it is done that way. Does that kind of make sense a little bit, what I'm getting at?
No, because, again, we're talking about conversations that have nothing to do with while you're there. And that happens all the time. Police officers are human beings, and if there's something that is conversing that has nothing to do with the scene, there's no reason we record that. We do that now with the arbitrator.
Okay, sorry. My original question was if it was within the scene, so let's say police officers are there in the scene, then is it, will it remain recorded?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, cool. Thank you. And then this has to do, I, this might have been a better question for the judge. But when it comes to the protection of the identity of a confidential informant, does public records or any other laws protect that identity if that informant is testifying in any way?
Testifying to-
In court or to a police officer, or in any situation where information from a confidential informant could end up in an investigation or anything like that?
Yeah, we usually don't record confidential informants for, for that reason. And we have an obligation, if they were, are an assigned confidential informant, to protect their identity for their safety and the safety of their loved ones. So it may not be available, if that's what you're asking. But if you're talking about testifying in court, this depends on where you are. I've testified in, in federal court before on, you know, cases that involve multiple states jurisdictions, and I've seen courtrooms cleared out. I've seen sequestering and things of that nature. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it may be better suited for a judge or a lawyer.
Right. I guess part of my concern comes from, so again, this is from my discussions with the professor I was speaking to. And so, for example, in San Diego, there was a report that came out a while back where 80% of all convictions were from, from someone who, a confidential informant who provided some kind of information. And that means 80% of those convictions had some information that you can't really pinpoint where that information is from or go to the truth in some matter. So I'm a little bit worried where I don't know how much, how many of the charges here are from CIs in general, but if there is, basically, would there be an opportunity for an officer to say, like, my confidential informant said XYZ? And would that be interpreted as, is there a possibility where that information cannot be?
Alder, is this relevant to body cameras?
Yes, because it's in the policy here.
Body cameras will be for patrol officers. Patrol officers do not manage confidential informants.
Okay, thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alda Martinez-Rutherford?
Yes. Wow, I need to go to sleep. So Chief Barnes, I'm curious about when the recording device will be triggered to start capturing? Is there something that triggers a, like, pulling of a weapon, or?
Yeah, it's a great question. It depends on what, I can't, I'm sorry, but it does depend. There are so many models of body worn cameras, and it just depends on, you know, what we decide to test, you know, whether you want to go with the Cadillac or whether you want to go with their Mercedes Benz. They're both excellent vehicles in my judgment, but they cost different. And so there are cameras that will activate when the weapon is pulled. There are cameras that will activate when the tasers are pulled. There are cameras now that will activate when the heart rate doubles. There are cameras that will allow supervisors access if that officer pulls his weapon, and you can immediately get on scene and get help, make sure he or she or they are not by themselves, making sure they're not making a bad decision. There are cameras now, we had a situation recently where we were negotiating with someone who was attempting suicide or wanting to commit suicide. There are cameras now that will allow hostage negotiators to see what's going on and then relay that information. They can talk to the officer and tell them what to say to help them out. And that could be even given to our Carriage Program until they get there, right? And so it just depends on, on the model that you want to get.
And second question, and then I'll be, I'll let you have your time. What safeguards for people who experience domestic violence and undocumented people can be employed to protect their identity and their safety?
Yeah, so I'll start with the undocumented question. So we have already, already have a policy, it's been there for a while, that we do not participate in any type of ICE or what do we call immigration control enforcement investigations. So for persons who are undocumented, there's, there's nothing, we've always had a policy that we don't give information, we don't allow video sharing, we don't say, hey, take a look at this, we don't do that. It's always been in our policy, and it's certainly consistent here. And then the safeguards for domestic violence is, again, public records law. That information would certainly be redacted, but it's dependent on who's, who's wanting it. As, as Alder Evers pointed out, of course, the prosecution would get that, and the defense would get that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, additional questions?
And thank you for bearing with me, like, with this whole, I was transporting at the same time as asking questions. So just two more questions for Chief Barnes and one for you. The equipment that is to be used for these, for the pilot program, do we have one specific camera, or are we testing several different cameras? And how, how did we choose which camera that we will be testing?
Yep. So we currently do business with three companies that operate body worn cameras. We do business with Panasonic. We have Panasonic body worn cameras now. Our motorcycle officers have them as well as our SWAT team. We do business with Axon. They are the owners of the tasers that we carry. And we also do business with Motorola. They make the radios that we have. And so the idea was because we already do business with them to use their products to test out the particular body, body one camera pilot.
So we're going to use three different cap, products?
Yeah, there, there are all kinds of companies out there. There's some that are good and some that are not. And in my experience, I've seen, I've seen some that are just, just that, right? And it's no better than having your cell phone out. But we do want to make sure that we, we have a camera that, that's going to work, that's not going to break, that's not going to fall off. I mean, there's a lot, you know, I hate to say it, but it feels, it feels reminiscent of when we first started this back in, in 2012, where we had cameras on the epaulettes, we had cameras on the Oakley glasses and things of that nature. So yeah, some of this we've kind of already figured out, but, but that's how we would go about it.
Okay. And was there any specific camera that was proposed, like, to use by the feasibility committee?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then-
They, I'm sorry. They did talk about positioning. So that may be a part of it because they talked about wearing it at the highest possible point. And currently, Axon has one that attaches to glasses, but I'm not sure if they still manufacture that, that model anymore.
Okay, I see, I see. And then going back to the question about race and ethnicity, like, will we be able to disaggregate any information that we receive by race and ethnicity?
Yeah, we always keep, if you're talking about arrests, that's part of the demographic information that we would keep. So you could easily see, you know, officers who were, who had body worn cameras or who didn't. You could see who they arrested, what their race and ethnicity, ethnicities are, if that's what your question is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have that now.
But we don't track through prosecution? Like, City of Madison doesn't track through prosecution?
No, we don't. I, I tried to do a study, I tried to do a juvenile study when I first got here because I was looking at, I was hearing about repeat juvenile offenders, and if I'm going too far, Mayor, you can stop me. But in, in that, I tried to track a list of juveniles who were arrested to see if they were being arrested multiple times for the purposes of, of working with some of our other governmental agencies to get these kids help. But I, I couldn't keep a track of them because the information wasn't there. I was like, are they in, are they out? And no one had an, an answer. And so it is kind of difficult to determine where they are in the, in the, in the realm of prosecution, unfortunately.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then a question for Attorney Haas. Please stop me if this was already answered before I was able to pop onto the meeting. But when I went through, when I went through the resolution that was passed previously in 2022, the resolution called for us to, called for a pilot that implemented recommendations listed in the final report of the BWC Feasibility Review Committee to the greatest extent possible, and that you, city attorney, would verify substantial compliance, and that us as common counsel will vote to recognize that substantial compliance? Can you, is that, am I like explaining that right, or can you explain that in like, human terms?
Human versus attorney terms?
Right, right.
I can try, Alder. Thank you. So just, the, the clause of the resolution says, "Be further resolved that a body worn camera pilot shall not proceed until the pilot program and policy has been reviewed by the Office of the City Attorney to verify substantial compliance with the provisions of the above paragraph, and the common counsel votes to recognize said compliance, amongst some other conditions." So as we indicated in our, in our memo of June 13th, you know, that, that doesn't say that there's no pilot unless the MPD's policies exactly match what was recommended by the, by the Body Worn Camera Feasibility Committee. It, it talks about substantial compliance. And so that's a matter of interpretation, as I've been saying to the committees that have met about this. There's also language about, to the greatest extent feasible. So there's a lot of latitude in there. One person's judgment about what substantial compliance is could be different than another's. And especially if you're, you know, in a legal debate about what it means. So the, that's the provision. That was our task. I, I want to mention that Assistant City Attorney Marcy Kurtz is here, and she's the one that really did the in-depth analysis and put together the reports that you have. I guess the, the other point I would make about that, that directive is, you know, the Body Worn Camera Committee, Feasibility Committee, obviously, they haven't gone back to review what the proposed policies are. We don't know. You've heard in the committee meetings, some input from former Feasibility Review Committee members, whether they're in supportive or not. But that committee obviously hasn't come back to say, okay, let's look at MPD's proposed policies and decide if we think that they substantially comply with what we recommended for a pilot and either individually, you know, one by one, or in totality, if they would have thought that these, this set of proposed policies substantially complies to the greatest, greatest extent feasible. So that's why I think we tried to couch our, our memo to the, to the council with, you know, it's really a judgment call here. We're talking about a pilot program. Does the council think that these proposed policies are close enough to what the Feasibility Committee recommended, given what the police department has said about its reasons for varying from the requirements? And so that, that's in the end just going to be a decision of the council, whether you're comfortable enough to authorize a pilot program under the, being implemented under the policies proposed by MPD.
Thank you, Attorney Haas.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Mayor. This question is for Chief Barnes. Chief Barnes, right now, when you talk about arbitrators, is that like the voice recording of what people have on right now, officers? Oh, sorry, Chief. There you go.
Yes, yes, it is. It's, it's dash cam with a microphone. It's basically a Bluetooth. So the further you get from the vehicle, the less connectivity you have.
Okay, so when you refer to arbitrators, those are only as dash cams? Is that what that, you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
So no officers right now have any type of voice, voice recording on them? It's just on their vehicle?
No, the mic is on the officer. The video is on the car.
Okay, 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 okay. So, but it only works when it's so close to the dash cam? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so if an officer were to park their car and, and go into a building or fly the stairs, they could lose some of that audio. Obviously, they would lose the visual.
Right. So my question is, right now, is that, as soon as they go out for a call, get the call saying that they're on the way, is that when they're supposed to turn on the dash cams?
Yes.
Do we have any report right now? Do we have any report right now, currently, like, how many officers have been on call and have not activated their dash cams?
I'm not aware of any. We do have reports on the arbitrator mics because those have to be synced like any Bluetooth. So I can certainly give you reports on officers who don't sync those, but most of those are equipment errors. That is an old, old system. And I can't think of anyone, and I got to be honest with you, that still uses those.
I think this will be my last question. So is there any penalty for not turning on the dash cam or not having your mic synced up?
Oh, absolutely. There's been mic sync gates, if you will, plenty of times in this police department. But the idea is to determine whether it was broken, whether you couldn't get connectivity, or if the officer just failed to sync their mic. And that is a violation of policy, yes.
So what type of ramifications would happen from that? Let's say, you know, obviously, the first time's probably a warning, but therefore after. Can you tell me the times?
Yeah, yeah, so I don't have the full data on that, but yes, you're right. It starts with a warning, it starts with retraining, you can go to work rules, you can have a written letter of reprimand if it's habitual, but usually, they don't want that letter of reprimand, so we don't really see the habitual mic sync issues like we've seen before in the past. But again, the problem is determining, you know, most officers will tell you, I didn't sync my mic, and they know what's going to happen from that. But the truth of the matter is, the system is very old and most people don't use it.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Latimer-Burst.
Yeah, thank you. I had a couple of questions. I guess one, my first question was, well, I'll ask to both of you, Attorney Haas and Chief Barnes, is with the substantial compliance, is, doesn't the chief have some say-so in that? In other words, you have this, you know, mandate or request, and then the chief tries to, you know, do the best that he can leading the department to meet those things? And, you know, isn't it like a two-way street is what I'm asking? So, I mean, what I'm getting at, let me be specific, is when you read the comment on substantial compliance, I know you can't say yes, it's like, we can't give us, you can't give us an exact percentage, but would you say that it's like completely off? They didn't, you know, they're not doing anything? I mean, could you clarify it? Could you quantify it with a percentage? Because in anything, there's always something that's not matched exactly. Am I making sense? I'm trying to get at that substantial compliance through both of you and why it's not perfect.
Yeah, so, you know, there are, simply saying it's different doesn't mean that we, that it's not the same, right? So there are areas where I actually add it to the policy. For example, my policy has definitions, this policy doesn't. So that would be an area of non-compliance. There's areas in the policy where I say, well, we're not going to record at community meetings or neighborhood meetings. Well, they didn't think to put that in there, I put it in there. But the biggest thing is to note that, you know, their policy was written for full implementation. I'm writing a policy for a pilot program that needs to have some room for adjustment to see what we can and what we can't do, what's feasible and not feasible. And I will tell you now, the policy isn't well-received as I wrote it internally. And this is from the officers, right? And so it's just one of those things where I had to be fair. And I had to go through the policy and say, they were right on these issues, I agree with them. This issue, I don't think they understood, public records. This issue, I don't know that they knew it was somewhere else. There's a part in there where they talk about the sharing of logins, there's an APM that already covers that. So it was, there's really no need to put it in there because it's already covered. We did some footnotes in certain areas. And so I would just simply say that it's certainly not a full adaptation, but it is the best adaptation. And I believe it substantially complies with the resolution. I did what the council asked me to do. I wrote the policy, I went through every line more times than you can possibly believe, along with my executive officer, Lieutenant Marshall, who's on with me as well. And, you know, it was criticism from the internal union that, hey, you should have brought us in on this. And I had to meet with them to explain to them that, yes, I do have your best interest, but please understand that my, my task was to create a policy that substantially complies with the feasibility committee's report, and I did that. And then I was asked to present it to two bodies, the Public Safety Review Committee, then I was asked to send it to the Civilian Oversight Board. I did both of that, and I did presentations for both bodies, and it passed in both bodies. I've done exactly what you asked me to do.
And just to follow with that, you know, trying to meet substantial compliance, which is undefined of what that is, is will there, you know, if it is implemented, do you anticipate there'll be more changes that come about? And along the way, since you've been here, have there been more changes that have made as you've talked to people, you've interacted with different people, you've gotten different questions?
I think we let the data tell us where the policy is successful and where the policy fails. The officers will be able to say, hey, it was confusing, I didn't know if I should cut it on or cut it off, so I just left it on. We will have to figure that out as we go through because it's new to the officers, and so we let the data tell us that. But if you're asking me a question about full implementation, I would have to defer that to your next chief because this has taken some years off my life. So whenever we're done with this pilot, I want to be able to present the information to this body. And certainly with, with a lot of decisions that has to be made, you will not hear a recommendation from me other than information. So I'm in the information business, and I think that's where we need to kind of focus.
Yes, so I guess what my question is, simply put, is this is a developing project, and from your experience of, you know, being at the top echelons in policing, it's something that evolves, right? Like, did, is there any police department that got it 100% the first time they implemented it?
No, we started in my former life back in 2012. And not to give you too much of that story, but I will tell you, when I sat at the table with then-Chief Miller, who said he wanted to do body worn cameras, I was the first one to say, nope, absolutely not. We're the police, what are you talking about, body worn cameras? If we say something or you don't believe me, you know, we testify in court, we've been doing this for 200 years, what's the problem? And he talked about transparency, the need to show the community what we do, the need to hold people accountable. And this was before the Ferguson incident where everyone went to adapt cameras. And so because I was the biggest critic, he assigned me as part of the committee. I don't know why, but it's almost felt like punishment, but I learned a lot from that process. And yes, we tweaked our policy several times. There were some things that we could do, things that we couldn't do. There were limitations of the technology. In those days, we had the cameras that went on the glasses, and they would fall off in scuffles or if you were running. And so, you know, we really helped, believe it or not, develop the actual technology, the stabilization, things of that nature. We gave that positive feedback to then, the company was called Taser. And so, yes, I do think, like with any policy, there's always an evolution. But for this, we're talking about 90 days of randomized controlled trial of officers wearing a body worn cameras so we can bring back information to this body so that at some point, it doesn't have to be we're not bringing it back, but at some point, if we decide to do this, you all can have information to make an informed decision.
Will we get this information without testing, without doing a pilot? Would we be able to ever reach those answers that we're looking for without doing a pilot?
Well, I mean, there's plenty of research out there on body worn cameras. We could, you know, do a meta-analysis, but the problem with that is, you know, for every, everything you find in body worn cameras, you'll find the opposite somewhere. But what we want to know is how it affects our community. I think that's the right thing to do. I, with respect to Minneapolis, someone mentioned that earlier, with respect to Memphis, with respect to another city that someone mentions, I can't speak for them. I cannot speak for what they do there. I can only speak for this department. And I can say with the highest degree of certainty that this department does not operate like Minneapolis. And if you want to know why I can say that, please talk to me after this meeting, I can explain that to you.
Okay, and I just have two more questions. One of my colleagues talked about the retention, you know, and that was under item seven on the comparison of policy that we received. And it seems to me, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, but it seems like, you know, the state law says you got to do this, and then this is an instance where you went a little further and said, yeah, state law says this, but let's actually do that. So it seems like, is that also, then that would be a situation that would be out of compliance?
Yeah, it would be because I don't think that authors of the feasibility committee consulted with a public records expert when writing this. I think they're certain their heart and minds was in the right place, but we have to comply with the law. Again, we have dash cam videos and other videos, and we do that. We have one of the best, I think, one of the best public records experts or custodian, I think is the term that's used in the state, in Julie Laundrie. And I can promise you this, she's not going to let us destroy a Post-it note without checking the rules first.
Okay. And then my last question is, in this 57-page report, which I read, you know, a lot of questions I had at the beginning until I read it about, you know, when officers, you know, when it suggests that officers can turn their cameras on or off, or if, you know, if I'm a, if they come to my house in simple terms and I don't want them to record, there's a leeway there. So when you went through and you were trying to get in to strict compliance, which this is not the case, it's substantial compliance, it's not strict, which says you cannot vary, substantial is like, good enough. Did you go through this report, these 57 pages, and try to cover everything to the best of your ability? I think you already answered the question, but-
Yes, I did.
Thank you, Alder.
Mayor, can I just-
Yeah, Attorney Haas?
Alder, if I could, just address a couple of things as a follow-up. I think you make a good point about the compliance with the statutes. As we pointed out, some of the body cam committee recommendations do not comply with the statutes. And so if you were to say this needs perfect compliance with the recommendations, that would not be possible. And I will, I will tell you, I will stick with our, the conclusion we put in our memo, which was that because of the, kind of the vagueness of the standards that the council gave us, it is a matter of interpretation, but, and that we did not give you a solid, this is substantial compliance to the greatest extent feasible. I really think that's a judgment for the council. But I can maybe help frame a little bit because I, you know, I can sense it's maybe difficult to figure out whether or not it's substantial compliance to the greatest extent feasible. I think it's clearly more than minimal compliance if you just look at the number of items that were adopted that are consistent with the proposed policy. And I can give you an argument for and against deciding that it is substantial compliance. You could, you could simply add up the number of times that it's in compliance and the number of times it's not. You can take a more qualitative look at it. If the council, you know, I think the provision that's gotten the most attention is whether or not officers can review the, you know, the video before writing reports. And some people may say the most important thing is to figure out what the facts are, regardless of whether we heard them or saw them or, you know, when you're, I've testified in court, and it's hard enough to recall exactly what happened when you're not in a traumatic situation. So, so in other words, I'm saying, if the council says it's so important that MPD follow that provision, that only following that provision is substantial compliance, I think that's a legitimate argument. On the other hand, you can look at the many items that are either in compliance or consistent with the recommendations, or that are different because the statutes do not permit the recommendations, or you think that the police department has given adequate justification for where it is varied from the recommendations. I think that's also perfectly, you know, legitimate conclusion to make. And so, and it might be a little bit frustrating that you're not getting a definite answer from us, but I hope you can kind of understand how we're trying to honor what the council directed us to do, but not overstep in taking away a decision that is really within the council's purview.
Alder Latimer-Burst, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just so, but it is substantial compliance and not strict, which are legally two entirely different things. That's my first question. And then my other question is, I wanted to go back to the police chief and ask-
Alder, let's do one question at a time.
Yeah, okay.
So, so yes, if I could, just two other quick points. These are not necessarily policies that the council would have to stick with if it decided to do full implementation. That's the purpose of the pilot. And the council may decide after a pilot that they're comfortable going ahead with full implementation, but maybe some of the policies were not successful and they want them to be tweaked. And the last point I would make is just, I mean, all city agencies are using data to try to improve their procedures. And so, you know, the police department isn't unique in starting out with a set of policies or procedures, looking at how they work, and then revisiting them. This is obviously a higher-profile one because the council's involved, it's potentially a big-ticket item. But it's not unique, I think, among city agencies to constantly be reviewing what policies and procedures are put in place.
Okay. And then my question is really, I don't even know if I should be asking it, but, you know, just about a police report, about police reports. What is the purpose of police reports, given that most of the time, the police were not there? And then when they're used in court, the judges was there, nobody was there? So it's like, it's like a, what's the, kind of defining like the police report, like what, how do I ask this in a different way? I'm thinking about it, so I'm trying to figure out how I'm thinking about it. So, like, if I say, you know, the purpose of the police, when they do a police report, is they come to the scene, well, actually, if you could explain it, do they come to this scene and they interview this person, and then they interview that person, then they write up the notes? I'm trying to find out, I'm trying to get at the police report, why they would be interested in maybe checking their notes?
So-
Because they weren't there? Even when someone's murdered, they weren't there?
Yeah, yeah, I think you're correct. So, you know, there is a point where the actual offense occurs. Most people, not all, but most people don't commit crimes in front of the police, so we're not eyewitness to it. But the law does allow us to take the direct testimony of someone who was there and then use that direct testimony to establish probable cause in order to make an appropriate arrest. Or probable cause, it's not there, we can use that direct testimony to create reasonable suspicion, or perhaps it points us in the right direction of someone who may have committed an offense. It serves as a record of the offense. There are many reports, probably the majority of the reports we take are information only. And so someone can have a record of something that they think they may want to go back to at a later date. Some reports are taken for civil purposes, like insurance. Some reports are taken so that we have a documented, document of a pattern of behavior involving someone who may not commit a crime yet. So there are a variety of reports. There are as many categories of reports as you can imagine. The, there's research that shows that 75% of a police officer's time is spent writing reports. You don't see that on TV, you see the car chases and the foot chases, but that's not the reality of policing. It's documenting what you see, what you've heard, and understanding that that direct testimony could be used to get someone justice.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze, for the second or third time? Did you bring out again, Alder?
Yeah, in regards to questioning, right?
Yeah.
Staff, right?
Yeah, we're still on questions for staff.
Okay, I think this is probably my first time at all.
Oh, sorry, you had questions for-
Yeah, yeah.
Speakers, sorry.
See, what was my question before you made me lose my- See, what was my question before you made me lose my thought here? Probably Attorney Haas. I was actually thinking, when we talk about cost, you know, we really can't quantify and put it in a vacuum once we start talking about lawsuits, especially, you know, that been paid out, probably 3.5 million back in 2015. So just your, can you give your thoughts about, when it comes to lawsuits and costs as far as procedure?
I'll take a stab. I'm sure, not sure, Alder, exactly what you're getting at. But with regard to body cams, I think you've probably heard the chief and others talk about transparency and more information is better. Lawsuits are supposed to be about getting to the facts. And so if there is body cam footage that helps us get to the facts, that helps us internally in evaluating city exposure. It can also help us in, you know, deciding whether a case should be settled, whether we should, you know, defend a case. And so I guess in general, more information is better.
I guess it's probably for the chief, since he was doing the implementation in his hometown. I guess your experience of before and after, is it, what would your, as far as saying how quickly a case was solved due to, due to our body cams?
You know, I don't think that body worn cameras necessarily help to solve crimes, because usually they occur before we get there and we're wearing them. But, you know, certainly when it comes to officer behavior, I can certainly speak to that. I have been a subject matter expert, working with the Department of Justice, the Civil Rights Division, on several high-profile cases. I won't mention them because I have confidentiality agreements. But I will tell you that in each of these cities, they are mandated to have body worn cameras at the conclusion of the investigation, period. And those who do have them, the body worn cameras, and the review of myself and other subject matter experts that are brought on by the U.S. Department of Justice, we review thousands of hours of body worn camera footage in order to establish what they call pattern and practice of behavior. So to the issue of accountability, absolutely it does. Because I have been a part of those investigations, and the longest one I've been on lasted for over a year. And so that's not really where we want to be. I don't think we're there yet. But I hope that certainly answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan, definitely for the second time.
Yes. And I do apologize, I'm Mayanorian in criminal justice, so I'm kind of a nerd about this. So, quick question, I think. So what Judge Mitch Mitchell said about the prosecutor sending information to defense attorneys is factual? That's correct, in majority of the situations. But that's only in Dane County, because of a Dane County rule. So when you guys make a charge that ends up in possibly federal court, for example, will MPD still send the video footage to the defense attorneys, for example?
Yeah, let me be clear on this. When we make charges, at the conclusion of the case, and we do federal cases all the time, there is a prosecution summary that is completed by all officers involved. Any information, note, Post-it, notepad, video, must be submitted in that prosecution summary. So yes, there's no withholding, and I don't know why your professor is telling you that, but there's no withholding of evidence for a person who is a defendant, their defense team or their prosecution team. That would be a gross violation, and a judge would not be happy about that. And I don't think the officer would be either, once the judge is done with that. We do not withhold evidence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I mean, the evidence is provided to the defense by the prosecutor's office, not by the police department.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, questions?
Yeah, I just have one question for the chief here. In your opinion, would 90 days be an appropriate enough time to really get meaningful data?
That's a good question. You asking me as a researcher or as a police officer?
As a scientist, as a researcher.
You know, it's always more information is better, more data is better. But I think we can get what we need in 90 days, certainly. There's also a matter of cost. I had an opportunity to talk to Anthony Braga. And if you've ever read anything about body worn cameras, you've seen his name. He was also involved in the Boston Miracle Focus Deterrence, where they were able to turn that city around in gun violence using a public health approach. So he's very famous and someone that I know and trust. I asked him, I said, when you did NYPD body worn camera pilot, what did you do? They studied the entire NYPD. They did a randomized control trial. It lasted a year. I said, I probably shouldn't be telling you this, but I said, what'd you charge them? And let's just say, it was a lot more than what we have budgeted right now. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear that it's important that we operate within the parameters of the generosity of the community and the generosity of this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, for the third time?
Yes, thank you. Just for Attorney Haas, it seemed like, in some of the other questions, there was like, some, still some confusion. Can you just, I know I asked this for, but like, really, really clearly, the city attorney has like, said, we don't like, not that we, has not made an explicit determination that this is in substantial compliance, right? And, like, you haven't made an explicit determination, and you're saying, here's what the facts are, you decide if it is, right?
I believe you're correct. We have not, we have not made a determination that it is not in substantial compliance? Is that what you asked?
Yeah, that it is in substantial compliance.
That it is or is not? We have not, we have not given an opinion either way. Overall, the overall policies, proposed policies, whether or not they're in substantial compliance. As I said, I think that's ultimately a decision for the council, and I think there are arguments either way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Slack, questions?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, you know, this pilot program has a lot of different facets to it. Whether or not you implement the full set of recommendations of the feasibility study and committee, I don't really think we're going to get to a place where we have outcome evaluations here. This is really about implementation. And in this short period of time.
Alder, hold on a minute. Is your question for the chief, because she's stepped out of the room?
Well, it's more for, it's more a comment for everyone.
So if it's not a question, then if you'd hold it for discussion?
Okay.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKenney?
The chief just mentioned that Lieutenant Marshall would be available to answer any questions directed to him.
Thank you, Alder. Did you have questions?
No, I was just giving input and information.
Thank you. I don't have any other Alders in the queue with questions. Pausing in the 9:30 realm to see if anybody wanted to make a suggestion. Alder, figure out a call.
We take a five-minute break, maybe 10, 7?
Moved and seconded for a 10-minute?
10 minutes.
Break. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we will recess for 10 minutes. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Okay, we're about two minutes out. We are one minute out from coming back. One minute out. Okay, folks, it's been 10 minutes. If I can have the Alders on the Zoom, come back. Turn your cameras on. If I can have the Alders in the room, please take your seats. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. Okay, we're good. And I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKenney. Alder Harrington McKenney is present. Alder Knox? Knox is present. Alder Latimer-Burris? Latimer-Burris is present. Alder Madison? Madison is present. Alder Martinez-Rutherford? Alder Miyazey? Miyazey is present. Alder Rommel? Rommel is present. Alder Slack?
Present.
Slack is present. Alder Tischler? Alder Tischler is present. Alder Vavir? Alder Vavir is present. Alder Vitiver?
Present.
Alder Vitiver is present. Alder Wohelia. Alder Wohelia is present. Alder Bennett. Alder Bennett is present. Alder Conklin. Alder Conklin is present. Alder Curry. Alder Curry is present. Alder Duncan. Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers. Alder Evers is present. Alder Field. Alder Field is present. Alder Figaro Cole. Alder Figaro Cole is present. Alder Goodwin Rajan. Alder Goodwin Rajan is present. Madam Mayor, we have a form.
All right. Thank you. President Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually just pressed send. So, back to the amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I did just send you all, all Alders, my colleagues, a revised with updated, changed grammatical errors, as well as added requests for budget considerations and a timeline for that information to be provided to us. And, Madam Mayor, I would like to speak to the motion.
So, Alder Curry will move her amendment, which the Clerk has, I believe the Attorney has, and you all should have in your inboxes. Is there a second for that amendment? Alder Field was marginally ahead, will second. And then, yes, please, President Curry, if you'd like to speak to the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, my computer does not die. But I wrote down my thoughts because my brain, I'm surprised, is still working. So, speaking to the amendment at hand, so I just want to provide a little bit of context and why. So, surprisingly, I've actually had a change of perspective regarding body-worn cameras. As some of you may recall, I was one of the Alders that was in opposition to the budget amendment that passed. So, this change has come from doing ride-alongs, talking to both officers responding to calls, their supervisors, and the leadership that guides them. And to be extremely honest, MPD has been the most consistent source of service in addressing the issues that residents of the Meadowland Neighborhood, which is in my district, are experiencing. However, it does not change my perspective as someone who is a member of more than one marginalized community, a professional who spent over a decade working with some of the most disproportionately targeted, oppressed, and marginalized individuals, and, most importantly, the mother of a black son who is, who's a legally licensed avid outdoorsman and first responder himself, who still gets stopped and questioned in our own neighborhood when he's been safely transporting his hunting rifle from our home safe to his vehicle. Personally, it's been an arduous journey, and I'm, I've only been most intimately involved for the past two and a half years as services, as an Alder. So, I have extreme sympathy for Chief Barnes, and thank him and his staff for his work, for their work, as well as the community members who have been at this work on all sides of the issue much longer than myself. With that, I want to express an immense disappointment at the dismissiveness of community members, which include residents who are most targeted for policing, and the recommendations that they provided, which are not in front of us on the pilot that we're voting on tonight. Also, enormous disappointment, especially considering the words "trust and transparency," and the fact implementation of body-worn cameras in our community continue to imply automatic enhanced trust and transparency. And extreme disappointment and confusion at what seems to be a rushed policy after decades of focus and anticipation of body-worn cameras, as well as 15 months post the Council's approval to move forward with establishing the pilot study. The Body-Worn Camera Feasibility Committee met 26 times over seven months in 2020. The top two takeaways that I take from their report are: Body-worn cameras are not a panacea, and alone cannot be expected to fix or necessarily even improve the perceived problems with policing and police-community relations. And two, if body-worn cameras are to be implemented, the implementation must only be as a part of a package of reforms designed to enhance accountability, improve community relations, improve outcomes, and ensure body-worn cameras are utilized appropriately in ways that minimize their potential for unintended harms. So, there's a lot more that I could say, but I know that there are others that want to speak after this. But considering everything that I have looked into, researched, read, including my comments tonight, it's of most importance to me that we ensure any body-worn camp, any war, any body-worn camera program the city might adopt ensures compliance with best practices, not only in existing law, law enforcement, but, most importantly, feedback from all of its residents it serves. In my opinion, that's not what's before us tonight. However, I do feel the amendment I'm proposing is a compromise in order to move forwards towards a pilot that I personally feel comfortable supporting, and I would encourage my colleagues to support me in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. So, what's before us now is President Curry's amendment. Let me pause and see, make sure everybody can access that, and if there's any questions on the amendment. Alder Latimer Burris?
Yes, if President Curry could just walk us through the changes, you know, and the net result of that, those changes, what that, you know, like, for example, this line would change this, and it means this.
President Curry, you're welcome to, or if you'd like the attorneys to take an attempt at that?
Uh, oh, I tried to make it easy by highlighting and bolding, so.
No, I, I read your bold, I'm sorry.
There's not, it's not a back and forth here. Could you, President Curry, either, could you summarize, or would you like to ask the city attorney to summarize the clauses?
I'll take a stab at it, and if I miss something, based on conversations that I've had with the city attorney and Attorney Kuntz, basically, what's before us, I think, what struck out to me is, be it therefore resolved, the Council agrees that feasibility has substantially been met, that's not verbatim. That struck me as, without this amendment, I can't support that specific language, because I don't feel that that has been met. We have varying views on that. The city of, city attorney even responded to a question asked by one of our peers tonight regarding specific thoughts on the feasibility and compliance of what's presented in the pilot and what was asked for in the task force recommendations. So, it, to me, adds or provides some of the concern that myself and others, community members, including members of PCOB and PSRC, have expressed about the incompatibility, regardless of why or, you know, best practices. So, I feel like this is all-encompassing of saying, yes, let's move ahead, yes, there's still work that should be done, improvement should always be the target, but it moves us forward and doesn't continue moving us in a direction that I feel is dismissive of what the Council has asked of the pilot before us.
Thank you, President Curry. Further discussion, Alder Knox?
Yeah, you guys earlier heard my concern about even if a 90-day pilot is adequate for getting data. So, I guess my question is, so is the intent of the 60 days into the 90-day pilot, or earlier, if available, requesting, is that just operating costs? Or do you want the full, you know, pilot analysis early? That's my question.
And so?
What the intent of that?
A question for staff, Alder, or?
I think it's, well, whoever, I guess it could be a question for staff. I'm asking a question about what's in the resolution, the intent of that. Anyone want to take a stab at it? Or is it what I think it is? Well, it sounds like they want a earlier determination. I'm thinking we need the benefit of the full 90 days of the pilot.
Alder Knox.
President Curry?
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I can take a stab at that, because I did add that, and it was actually as a suggestion from Attorney Kuntz at Kurtz. As I was sitting here listening to answers that were provided by Attorney Haas, I heard more than once there was a lack of clarity in the direction. And so, in my original, original draft that I sent to you all this evening, explaining my intent to propose an amendment, there wasn't a timeline, there wasn't a budget consideration. The timeline is to hopefully provide some more clarity, and also, yes, 90 days is a short amount of time, but hopefully, two months in, we still have a month left. But a piece of gray or vagueness that I feel has not been addressed in questions is about what is the full cost. Also, with the, I think, realistic assumption that this is a pilot, and that a lot of folks are expressing a desire to see this fully implemented, along with the officers and the staff themselves. And so, we, as the Council, will also vote on budget considerations, and we have an operating and capital budget. And I think it's important to know specifically in the operating budget, because our first responders, specifically the police, top our operating budget year after year. We should know ahead of time what we're voting on, and what those financial implications are and mean to our budget.
Thank you, President Curry. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I think the paragraph that President Curry added regarding that the Police Department not implement full deployment outside of the pilot without authorization by the common, common Council is not actually necessary, because there's nothing in, the Police Department would not be able to implement full deployment outside of the pilot, because they, as President Curry just mentioned, that cannot be done without being, without the decision of this body. I don't think that that paragraph, therefore, needs to be in the resolution. And I would ask, because we're not voting on full deployment, and whether some people want full deployment, some people don't want anything at all, is not relevant. We're voting on a pilot. What happens with the information that the pilot generates, I think, would be best waiting until after the pilot is completed. And then, once that information comes in, we'll be in a position to make a separate determination. But those are two separate matters. The decision about any, any reference to full deployment needs to wait, and it, and it shouldn't be, it's not conditional about 60 days into a 90. In other words, there is no fear on my part, and shouldn't be on any of my colleagues, that somehow the Police Department could implement this at any point without express permission from this body. So, I would ask if the President would consider deleting that paragraph, because I don't think it's germane to a vote on the pilot itself.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wohelia? I'm sorry, Alder Slack was next. Go ahead, Alder Slack.
Just a couple of questions. Thank you, Chair. So, when I was listening to Attorney Haas speak and reviewing this table where there are inconsistencies, it seemed like quite a few of these were, were less consistencies and more just disagreement with what is currently law or policy, which would then need to be corrected. Is that, is that a fair assessment, Attorney Haas?
We, I'd hope we'd moved on, questions from staff, but it's, it's all right, Alder. Go ahead.
That's my impression. That's my impression, that at least 10 or 12 of these are guided by state statute or current policy. And so, I don't know if that changes the calculus of whether this is substantial compliance. The other thing I just wanted to say is, I don't actually think we're going to learn much in terms of outcomes, even though it's being designed as a randomized controlled trial. There's going to be a lot of variation in how this initiative gets implemented, and how various officers use the cameras, maybe are confused about when they use them. There's a lot of facets to this pilot, and there are going to be mistakes, and there's going to be variation. And I think one of the most important things that we can learn from this pilot is just what is that variation, why it occurs, what are the areas of confusion, what are the concerns of all stakeholders with the information that we collect? And that will put us in a better position to inform on whether we move forward with a more permanent policy that, you know, where we can make corrections. So, I, that's where I'm having some confusion in terms of the substantial compliance, and in terms of what we hope to get out of this. I think we have to lower our expectations a little bit about what we're going to learn, and focus pretty heavily on what we can learn, and that is what, what causes variation in how this gets implemented, and what are the implications of that variation.
Thank you, Alder. Now, Alder Wohelia, my apologies.
I'm okay, Madam Mayor.
You're good? Okay. Alder Harrington McKenney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the definition of a pilot is this, and it's my understanding, and I made sure that I went back to understand what a pilot is. A pilot is an experiment. A pilot study, pilot test, or pilot project is a small-scale preliminary study conducted to evaluate feasibility, duration, cost, adverse events, and improve upon the study design prior to performance of a full-scale research project. The body-worn camera is a pilot, and it is designed, in my understanding, to provide data to MPD and the Council to help in assessing body-worn cameras on Madison Police Officers. It should be, and it should be backed by data in the decision-making process. It shows needs, gaps, what's missing. And the, and I'm not considering it as full employment or deployment. I'm looking at it to provide the gaps and information to evaluate our next steps in terms of budgeting, and all those considerations that the Council will grapple with will be before us. But we do not have data to make those determinations. And for me, that's what a pilot is. It is, it is an experiment of expectation, so that we can determine what those gaps, how it fits, how it does not fit, and whether we want to go into full deployment. So, that's my definition. And the, what's before us in terms of the amendment is more granular than I'm ready to, to take on. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris for the second time?
Yes, sorry, I just, I want to be clear about this. So, I guess what I would like to do is, oh, wait, just make sure, I just lost it, just a second. So, if you could just bear with me a second, I just lost it. Can I, I just lost, I'm trying to find the whereas, thank you. You're always my go-to, right? So, I'm trying to understand the, the, what we're, what this amendment is saying and highlighting, and I'm, I'm reading language, and I'm interested in language. So, I'm just going to ask, I'm just going to read a little bit of what I'm talking about, and then ask a question. So, the first one that's highlighted says, whereas in the report provided by the OCA, there are numerous areas, including requirements to hardware, da-da-da-da-da-da. And I think that that paragraph is saying that you want us to determine that it is, we are not in compliance, we are not in substantial compliance. And that is why I asked the question to Attorney Haas for the definition of substantial, because that's what that paragraph right there is, is asking us to say, whereas we are not in compliance. That would be one. Numbers, the second one down says, whereas, per resolution file number 68625, after conducting a thorough review of the implementation, blah, 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 you're asking, in, in that paragraph, for us to get a third-party evaluation. Is that correct? My next, the next paragraph says, be it resolved that the Common Council directs MPD to continue to work towards updating their policy, blah, 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 blah. That, that paragraph is saying, hey, continue to work on your policy, we appreciate it. Then the next one, and I added the "we appreciate it," that wasn't definitely not in there. And then the next paragraph that says, be it further resolved, and your screen just went out, be it further resolved that, thank you, be further resolved that the Common Council directs MPD to continue to work towards, oh, I just read that one, updating their policy to have better compliance. I just actually read that one. So, I'm going to jump to the next one. Then it says, be it further resolved that the Madison Police Department not implement full deployment outside of the pilot without full deployment outside of the pilot without authorization. And that what Alda Evers had talked about, that that's not relevant at this time because they don't have the authorization to operate outside of this resolution anyway. And then the last one says, be it further resolved that the common counsel authorizes MPD to implement its body-worn camera pilot program. So I'm confused. Are we letting them go with the 90 days? Or are we not letting them go with the 90 days? Are we finding that they're in substantial compliance enough to allow them to go do the 90 days or not? That's what I'm asking, that I'm confused. And maybe I'm just dumb, but it just strikes me like they're two separate issues. We haven't done the pilot, and in order to get the pilot and evaluate it or do anything about it, we have to actually get to the pilot. So that's why I was asking for clarification. What do you mean by each paragraph?
Alda, the beautiful thing about legal language is that it's very literal, and it gets interpreted by lawyers. So if you would like to step to the back, I'm sure that the attorney would be happy to go through line by line with you and offer her interpretation of the amendment or the resolution overall. But the amendment, as I read it, and I am not a lawyer, does not change the intent of the original resolution with respect to implementing a pilot.
OK, so it's implemented, but it's finding that it's not substantial.
Those words are not written down in the amendment. So again, legal language is extremely literal, and I would strongly encourage you to step to the back of the room and talk to the attorney if you want to go through line by line.
Well, I do, because I spent 10 years in litigation.
Rather than dragging the entire council through that, I would suggest that you talk with the attorney, because we have plenty of people in the queue to give you time to do that. And I'll just remind the body as a whole that you can ask questions of each other, but you are not obligated to answer those questions. You certainly can if you want to. Alda Bennett, you are next.
Oh, man. So I just wanted to say that I will be supporting Alda Curry's amendment. I think that it's -- when I read the resolution, it doesn't make -- it is a very fair and maybe, in my opinion, overly compromising compromise, but I think it does get to the heart to ask of MPD to work towards updating their policy to be in better compliance, which is a concern that I know several council members have brought up. And I think that is imperative that we do not implement full implementation unless we, as the common counsel, authorize it and we see a full budget analysis of the approximate cost. That is a very fair and reasonable ask and should be done. I personally am also disappointed with the compliance, particularly I don't really -- I feel like it should be more clear-cut. And I know that these types of things aren't black and white, but I don't -- it feels -- it makes me feel uneasy that even our city attorney is wavering and can see very clear paths or arguments either way for if this is or is not in substantial compliance. Also, I believe that reviewing footage before the notes, before writing officer reports, is something that goes against what the pilot program or what the Body-Worn Camera Committee asks for, which is minimizing potential bias, and that we should ask of the MPD to at least have a more -- have a control subset of officers that do and officers that do not review footage before writing their reports. And ultimately, from what I heard today from staff, I feel as though this pilot has fallen way out of scope of what the Body-Worn Camera Feasibility Review Committee had intended for the pilot to be. I went back to the report, and it states, and I quote, "For the recommendation on the pilot, a primary use of the trial would be to determine if charging rates and pleading rates are increased, particularly for misdemeanors, for cases in which body-worn camera video is available. If there is statistically significant evidence of an increase in charging rates, particularly for misdemeanors, which can be causually connected to the implementation of body-worn cameras measures sufficient to fully offset the increase," blah, 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 blah. Anyways, it's very clear from this sentence that the committee intended for pilots to track the charging and pleading rates. And we heard from staff that that data is completely lost on us, and we're not even going to be able to track that. So it's really confusing to me how the way we have this pilot written versus the original intention of the committee. And I feel as though that is not in compliance with what we're hoping to see. And finally, I still have confusion about statements about how the purpose of, like, the pilot showing us whether or not, like, we should implement it. I am in disagreement there that I believe a pilot program should be able to help us make a determination. It may not be black and white, but it should be able to help us make a very clear determination. And instead, it seems like the pilot is not drafted with those intents, nor with the explicit intents of the committee. With that being said, I will say that I am in support of Alda Curry's amendment, because I believe that it alleviates some of those concerns. But overall, I do have a lot of concerns with how it is written.
Thank you, Alda. Alda Madsen?
First, I want to start off by asking the chief to respond to the first paragraph.
We did move on from questions for staff, Alda. I mean--
Well, the remark -- well, the remark--
You could easily step out and talk to the chief if you'd like to.
Well, I don't know where to go with this, but I'm going to give this a shot. I'm going to close my laptop and just speak. But basically, I would not be supporting this. I'm not supporting it because, you know, as one of the person here, the only person here that probably, before I was elected, that served on the Body-Cam Feasibility Committee, I guess we should probably have done more as far as taking a lot of our recommendations to making sure they are up to -- making sure that it's with state law. But we actually went through all kinds of recommendations, making sure if ICE came to town, if under amended immigrants would be taken to jail. We went through all kinds of recommendations. Even Brian Austin, that was on the committee as an officer, said that some of these things will not fly. But we threw everything into the recommendation. So I definitely agree with the chief that actually vetted this. I definitely agree with a judge that came here and actually supported it. I definitely agree with NAACP that supported it locally and nationally have supported it. I agree with the pastor also, Allen, that came and spoke. So when we're talking about listening to experts that have done the job, we need to start listening to the experts. So not only that, let me speak a little further. As an alder of a district that this is supposed to be implemented, let me say this. Out of thousands of doors that I knocked, only one door questioned me on Charles. Why would you, as an alder, a black person, vote for body-worn cameras that will further incriminate you? As I looked up for the answer, and I looked up at his camera, and I just thought to myself, why do every camera almost in this district, why do you guys have cameras? And as he got to answering his own question, he said, you know what? I lay that to rest. People want to know what happened. I know almost a lot of people here have kids here, and I have a father of three kids. Let me tell you a story. I mean, Madison 365 can easily tell you this, how my son was followed from MATC during the STEM program all the way to my front door. So we want to know what is going on. Why do we have the worst systemic system in Madison where it relates to African-American people? We need -- this is not a Panacea, like everybody said, to solve all behavior interactions with police. But we do need something to curb it. We can't keep on doing the same thing, expecting a different result. That's the definition of insanity. Something needs to change. And this change, everybody else around Dane County has body-worn cameras. Why isn't Madison the most diverse? It's time to us to get with 2023. You know, I made a post the other day. It's so funny. I made a post, actually not funny at all, but made a post about the simple fact, back in 1955, how a mother of Emmett Till put her son on display for the whole world to see to finally get justice. We're talking about cases, cases by cases, how people have finally found justice through body-worn camera. And we're now still debating this. All right. Well, if people want me to be silenced, that will not happen.
Alda, I'm going to rule against the point of order. Other alders have strayed from the minor question of the amendment to the major question of body-worn cameras. So I don't think that that's something that we can enforce anymore.
So all I'm saying, Mayor, is this, is that the simple fact of the matter, if people were talking about they have children, all I'm saying is I do. And people want to make sure that they know what happened. So thank you, and I'll let, I guess, other alders in the queue go.
Thank you, Alda.
Alda Rummel?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting this amendment. While I think there was tweaks, as you saw, from Alda Figueroa Cole that might be worth considering. I think generally, this amendment acknowledges that the substantial compliance question is not clearly satisfied and leaves that kind of open-ended, which I think I'm willing to accept. I might have higher standards, but I think we've been here discussing, not today or anything, but in general, discussing this idea for many, many years. So at some point, I think we should try the pilot and see what we learn. So I think this amendment gets us to information that we need. We need to call out a report. We need a report back. The previous language doesn't require that. Maybe you could assume it would happen. But this says, give us a report that has data that includes tracking officer time, which to me is a fundamental question of whether we can move forward with a program, you know, a full-scale program. And I want to know what really is involved in all aspects of all the details related to body-worn camera labor, so that we get information about that. And that it also has a request for a budget analysis, which is sort of the bigger way of framing that. And I guess I understand the reason for the timeline, because somehow I think then somebody's going to put an amendment in or a budget to do it full-tilt boogie. I sure hope not, not until we're done. So maybe you'll have to skip a year if you really think it's a good idea. But so I think that's the reason for the amendment or one of the elements of the amendment, which talks about within 60 days out of 90, we get some back. I really don't care about getting something in 60 days. I'm not sure we'll know enough in 60 days. I'm willing to wait till the whole thing's done, give the department and the chief a chance to study what they've learned and then report back to us. And so for me, there are over -- gosh, now, of course, I'm getting all scratchy. Oh, that lovely popcorn. Thank you, Alda Latimer-Burris. There are outstanding questions, but I think we'll have to deal with them coming back. All of you have raised them, like overpolicing, who has access to footage, the contradictions of our racial disparities with a generally decent police department that's sort of kind of hard to reckon with, considering what we know about stuff in the world. But, OK, I'll stop there. No, I have one more thing to say. This is part of a bigger thing that we're doing. I mean, I call my -- I've learned now, I'm an abolitionist. I think we should refine how we think about policing and talk about it in terms of community security. And we've, as a council, been pushing this concept. You might not all know it, but it's been pushed for many years. So now, we have the CARES program, which was a fundamental aspect of this kind of sensibility about community resources. We know the importance of affordable housing, quality schools, good community programs, and things for people who have needs. So that is the whole package. So this is just, to me, one aspect of it, and it's not -- and I guess my final point is, I'm not going to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Thank you.
Thank you, Alda. Alda Evers, I believe, for the second time?
First time. I haven't spoken to this amendment at all yet. Well, maybe I did. I guess I did.
I believe you did, Alda.
I can't keep track of anything right now.
I'm actually keeping track.
Thank you. I apologize, Mayor. Sorry. Yeah, I guess maybe I should shut up. Just a couple of things to make note of. Yeah, and I agree with what Alda Rummel just said, not letting the perfect be the enemy of the good. And a couple of other comments. One is the -- just an observation about confirmation bias. There are people in this room and in this community that are so gung-ho for body-worn cameras that it wouldn't matter about the quality of the pilot and the policy that was proposed, whether it was flawed or not, they would want to move forward. Similarly, there's confirmation bias on the other side, that people who are convinced that body-worn cameras are a bad idea and are looking to pick this apart and are looking to find fault with it and are looking for reasons not to support it. That operates on both sides. But I do need to clarify a couple of things. President Curry made reference to Public Service, the PSRC, which voted in favor with only one objection and recommending that this body approve the pilot. PCOB last night did the same with only two objections. And the Independent Monitor also endorsed the pilot. It's also not true that the chief just said that there wouldn't be any ability to track data regarding charging. He just qualified that there are some things that are discretionary and some things that are not. So sometimes we hear what we want to hear. I have trouble with this amendment, because it seems to be predicated on a lack of trust in what is essentially a pilot. A pilot that I think is substantially in the direction that we need to go and that we should let it move forward, is that with the recommendations of the two committees that we referred this to and asking for their recommendations to this body, and they came back overwhelmingly, a strong majority, recommending that we approve this. And so did the Independent Monitor himself, said, I'm in favor of this. Let's move forward. So I don't think it's perfect, this policy, but I don't feel at this point that we need to add language to where we're at to try to fine-tune it in any particular way. And particular, I don't think any reference to, you know. I suppose if the amendment asks for more information once the pilot is completed and asks that we get some budget analysis and we get some follow-up, that's fine. But I don't want it to be framed in this context of somehow or another doubting the, you know, kind of damning this before we even get started. I think either we support this with the recognition it's not perfect, we don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and we move forward. We don't micromanage the Police Department at this point, because I think we have enough information that we're in substantial compliance and that we can move ahead. So I'm-- So I'm troubled by this amendment. I don't think it's necessary. I'd rather that we just move ahead and vote in favor of the pilot. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask President Curry if she's amicable to an amendment, the amendment that I just sent where we asked for a full budget analysis of the ongoing operating cost and the budget in general, 60 days after the pilot completion.
So, Alder, I'll remind you and the body that it's not up to the sponsor of something, whether it's friendly, it's up to the body, and that would take us down too many levels.
Okay, so then, can I just make an amendment?
The city attorney corrects me. If you want to make an amendment to the amendment language, you can do that.
Yes, so I'm asking to make an amendment of the language for the be resolved clause that the Madison Police Department provide the common counsel a full budget analysis regarding the approximate cost of full implementation and ongoing operating costs 60 days after the 90-day pilot, or early if available.
Yeah. Alder Curry will second. So, just pause a moment to orient everybody to where we are in Robert's rules. The underlying motion is to adopt the resolution. There's an amendment provided by Alder Curry, which adds additional clauses. There's now an amendment by Alder Figueroa Cole, seconded by Alder Curry, which changes one of those clauses. Alder Figueroa Cole, would you like to speak to your amendment?
No, I think, again, the budget discussion is something that I understand is not the topic of discussion here, but it has been a topic of discussion throughout this entire process, and according to the meeting we had, finance meeting we had the other day, we are millions of dollars in the bucket already. Like, I would really want to understand, I would like to have a full picture of what this would look like before the next budget season.
Thank you, Alder. I'm going to go through the queue as it stands. You can choose to speak to the Second Amendment or not. If you choose not to speak to it, I'll keep you in queue for discussing the original amendment, if you'd like. Alder Knox, you're next.
Madam Mayor, from our budget meeting that we had the other day, is it not true that anything that gets in the budget, there's a budget projection each month or at some interval regarding what the projected, you know, cost of, cost analysis is of a program?
No, Alder. We, the budget projection is the, for ongoing expenses that we have committed to in an annual budget, and finance takes the opportunity every quarter to true up
Okay. Let me ask you this.
How close we are to budget and not. So they, it is, they would not do an assessment on the projected cost of a pilot.
Let me ask you this question, having been a, you know, a manager in government before, usually, in your budget, you will see where you are at any given time, monthly, right? And then it'll kind of project your cost to the end of the year. Does the city not do that in a budget?
We do that for ongoing programs. We wouldn't do that for a pilot program, because the pilot program has an endpoint. So we wouldn't project out annual costs for a short-term program.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, then, since this is my last time, well, I'm speaking on the Second Amendment, so.
Yes.
I'll be done on that.
All right. Thank you, Alder. Alder Wajilahi on the Second Amendment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting neither of the amendment, and my reason is, this is a pilot program. Alder Harrington McKinney defined what a pilot program really is. We have the time to learn more about the programs, compliance, information we need. The pilot program requires report, and as per Chief Burns indicated, there will be a report. There's no need to talk about the future finance. Already, we don't even know if that, this program's going to work, and we don't need to condition that we have to have the budget for it. Attorney Haas mentioned, every department has pilot program, but PD is the high-profile scrutiny. That's why, you know, we are hearing about this. Otherwise, all other departments go through some pilot program. As per Alder Evers, this went through the Public Safety Review Committee, voted 5-1. Independent Monitor support this, and Civilian Oversight Board support this 6-1. We have heard many leaders tonight, 95 registered, 82 supported the program, 11 opposed. And we don't need to waste the time, it's a pilot, we need to learn from it, and we have to give the time, and not waste so much time to analyze the if, buts, and whether this will work or not. So I will not be supporting neither the Alder Curry's amendment nor Alder Figueroa Cole amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
So, speaking to the amendment to the amendment, I honestly, I think, I can be in support of this, but honestly, I am neutral. Speaking to the actual amendment to the proposal, I would be in support of this. I think the main point that I really care about is the first be-it-resolved clause, where it says that MPD should continue to work towards updating their policies. I think this is kind of, that's the main part of this, and the budget, I think people have already spoken to how that may or may not affect everyone. But updating their policies is just kind of saying like, hey, like, you guys did a pretty good job with this. Maybe that is the case. But it's just like, the way I see it is, this is not a perfect system, it's not a perfect policy, I think most of us agree with that, but it's just reaffirming, hey, you still have the ability to continue to improve this as time goes on. And that makes sense in my mind. I think that once this pilot program is over, there are lessons that are going to be learned, and we should go back and update the policies after that. So with that in mind, I would be in support of the amendment to this resolution. In general, I am in support of this resolution itself, I think, just allowing body cameras, and at the very end, just seeing how the pilot program goes itself. I think there's, so for all three of these, I am in support, but I really think that we should get to a vote at this point, not to end discussion at all. But when it comes to, like, for the example of the 60-day into the 90-day pilot budget discussion, it's just a decision of whether this body feels like we should budget in a full program this upcoming budget or at next year's budget. And I think it's more practical to do so at next year's budget without the 60-day limit, because once this pilot program is over, we're probably going to send it over to the PCOB and the, whatever other committees we have, just to review all the data and come up with public input and feedback all over again, and that's going to end up taking much more than 90 days anyway. So this upcoming budget season, in a couple, now, we're not going to have the data required anyway. So I think just focusing on the first be-it-resolved clause of supporting continual policy adjustments as needed to ensure we have a good compliance would be cool. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I, I guess I go on, I just want to clarify, are we first going to vote on the Second Amendment and then come back to the, okay, then I can hold my comments till then?
Okay. I'll keep you in the queue. Alder Harrington McKinney on the Second Amendment? Or should I come back?
So, Madam Mayor, you're going to have to hold my hand through this, because I did have a point of order, and you'll let me know whether that's in order or not. My point of order is, is that this full discussion landed on substantially met, and when Alder Miazzi requested having the chief speak in on that, you said that we had passed. And so you've been very lenient in terms of holding us accountable. I think that it is important for me, as I'm making a determination about the alternate and then the alternate, how I'm going to vote, because it's still languished on the term substantially met. So my question of the chair is, is that could we back up and have the chief address what's, so that I can clearly make a determination of how I'm going to vote, the term substantially met? And I think that he is, would be the best person to speak on that. So that's my request, Madam Chair.
Alder, I'm not sure that any of the amendments alter the language relating to whether or not the policy substantially meets what the committee did. I'm just scrolling through. I don't think any of the amendments are relevant to that question.
A lot of the discussion was related to
Yes, that's absolutely true. The Alders have focused on that, but again, I don't think that the amendment language speaks to that question. So, you know, I think we could get ourselves down a rabbit hole on the question of substantially met, and I actually think that is probably not the most productive use of our collective time.
Well, I would have, I would have, and excuse me for not making this point of order, is that we went down that rabbit hole, and I would have, I would have wished that the chair would have kept us from going down the rabbit hole, because substantially met was brought up in much, much of the deliberations and conversations that we've had. And so since it was not addressed, and for us to be geared back to what is before us, my question is, and I still have a point of order, you can rule me out of order, but I need to register, my point of order is, is that substantially met, and the fact that immediately Alder Miazzi had requested that of the chair, and so I ask for a ruling by the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I am going to maintain that we had moved on from questions and that I, but to the substance of your comment, it, the question of whether the policy substantially meets the criteria that the committee laid out is not up to the chief, nor is it frankly up to the city attorney, it is up to you as a body. That's part of what you're voting on tonight. And so if you, if you're asking for opinions, the city attorney's office has already offered their opinion. If you'd like to know the chief's opinion, and you could have asked that during questions, but you can also just go ask him. And nothing in the language before you right now speaks to the council's determination on whether the policy substantially meets the committee's criteria, in the amendment language. So it would be in order to come back, when we're back to the main motion, to continue to discuss the question of substantial compliance. But at the moment, none of the language that, in the amendments, impacts the question of substantial compliance, and
That's before, now, at this point.
That's right. And so, the city attorney may want to weigh in, but I see him nodding, so.
We would have two votes before you really get to discussion about substantial compliance.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. And I won't even count that against you, because it was a point of order. All right. So then, Alder Miazzi on the Second Amendment?
Thank you, Mayor. I would not be supporting either presidents or the vice presidents for the simple fact of, the original amendment already pretty much gives guidance after the pilot is done, the COB anyway is supposed to review. I think that is within the recommendations. So there's already enough guidance, so I would not be supporting either or.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett on the Second Amendment?
I would, I just wanted to quickly clarify that, you know, to clarify any, I don't know, misunderstanding, that the amendment is simply to ask, seemingly, correct me if I'm wrong, simply to ask that we receive a full budget estimate 60 days after the pilot, which again, is a very reasonable request. We are, as one of my fellow colleagues continually mentions, we are several years in the making of this body-worn camera pilot and full implementation, and we have not once seen a full budget estimate from the police department about what we're even debating here today. And when we already have a department that takes up most of our monies, an $89 million budget, with budget cost estimates of up to $14 million
Excuse me, Alder. Yes, Alder Miazzi?
This is already in the budget, so for us to be discussing
Alder, she's not talking about the funding for the pilot.
I'm
Go ahead, Alder.
For, again, for clarification, I am discussing the language in the amended to amendment motion, which asked the police department to give a full budget estimate 60 days after the 90-day pilot program. So I was saying that we have not yet had a full budget estimate, and quite frankly, I think that is long overdue that we have that, especially like, I'll just give an example. I went to the store a couple weeks ago, and I tried on a dress for an event that I had. And when I went to try on the dress, I was like, damn, this looks really cute on me. Then I looked at the price tag and was like, damn, this is like $150, and I don't have that money. So I put the dress back on the rack. And similar to that, not that a pilot and body-worn cameras are dresses, we, when we're talking about these monies and like, after what are next steps, may, we, it is important to make a determination with the budget estimates, is our next step to send it to PCOB? Or do we need to have more conversations with the police department or with finance to talk about how much it's going to cost us? So again, I think it's a very reasonable request, and it should have been done already that we have a budget estimate of the costs.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Yep, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So I hate to do this, but I just have to, you know, since so many people have defined the word pilot, I just want to remind the body that on the last budget season, last year, we approved two pilots. One for a project in Ally Drive that was just meant for a specific task and didn't require any additional information about how much money that was going to cost us in the future, so that's, that is in progress, and I'm pretty excited about it. And then we have a second pilot that I work with, some of us, many of us actually, work with MPD to talk about the transports to Winnebago. That pilot itself does require a data analysis and a budget analysis for us to be able to incorporate that into our current budgets. So please, let's be real here, we're talking about the need to understand what the financial structure of these policies are going to look like. So yes, you can define pilot however you want to define it, but, but we have two perfect examples. We have two pilots this year, one that doesn't require an analysis, a financial analysis, and we have the one for the, for the transports, which I am also so excited about, and I cannot wait for, for MPD to report on that back to us, that will require an analysis of that. We're almost done with that pilot, and right after we're done with that, We're almost done with that pilot and right after we're done with that, they will present to us how much it's going to cost us to be able to add it to the budget. So we are not asking for anything different than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris on the Second Amendment.
Yes, and actually I have a point, I guess it's called a point of information. On the Second Amendment, then, is the only thing that would be on there would be, you know, that we would look at the budget, you know, at the 60 day mark and then all the other, all the other paragraphs that were bolded, struck?
No, Alder, the, what's before us right now is amending the amendment language.
Okay.
So if the, if this amendment passes, then the amended amendment language is the next thing we'll vote on. If it doesn't, we'll go back to President Curry's original amendment language.
Okay. And then another point of information, if we didn't do either of these amendments, would the amenders or the people, you know, President Curry be able to come and say, hey, you know how you're always saying we can do it later, so we can come back to, we can always come back to it later? Would President Curry be able to modify, if we pass the original, modify it, you know, at the next meeting? Because it seems like it's, people are not clear about, they're clear that they may support the body cameras, but like this might be going down into the weeds a bit.
Alder, it's a little more complicated with resolutions. You can go backward and amend a resolution, but that gets complicated. Normally you would just present another resolution asking for what you wanted to have accomplished, but, you know, certainly any of you at any time could bring forward another resolution about the body camera pilot or program, if that's the direction that we go in. But I think for staff's sake, it would really be better for us to just give them clear direction tonight, one way or another, and not sort of hold out the potential of coming back around and changing our minds on what kind of direction we're giving them.
And one more point of information is, does the future budget have to deal with, have anything to do with what's already, and I'd say this lightly, budgeted for this pilot to happen? Because the funds are already reserved for that. I mean, without going into the weeds on.
No. The language, the funding for the pilot exists. The question at hand is if the council were to want to implement a full body worn camera program, how much would that cost? That's the question at hand. That's what we're trying to get to here, right? And so one of the purposes of the pilot, I believe, is to establish what those costs would be. It's a fairly fundamental question. I don't think you can establish it without the pilot, or at least the pilot helps you have more certainty around those costs. And so no one is talking about changing the funding for the pilot.
Right. But the, my point of, point of information is, are the two related? In other words, if the two amendments are killed, they can always, they can always ask later, we'd like to, by the way, know how much, you know, we're going to spend in the future. Because it seems like they're being conflated, the two issues are being conflated. So I'm asking, does one rely on the other? Because it seems like it's an add-on that doesn't have to do with if they're going to do the pilot tonight, start the pilot or not.
Alder, I think the question of cost is fundamental to the pilot. I don't think you can separate the question of long-term costs from, from doing a pilot. I think that's fundamental to the point.
Was that in the original amendment? I mean, the original? Was the cost in the original?
Yes. The question of cost has always been part of the, part of the point of doing a pilot. So it, again, I would encourage us to not get super wrapped up in this. The police department is going to determine how much it costs. It doesn't really matter whether, sorry, it does not really matter whether you put the language in or not. They are going to provide you with a budget estimate. If it gives, apologies. Does anybody object for me speaking from the chair on this one?
Not at all.
Not at all. If it gives some of your colleagues comfort to put the language in, to have the department do something that they're going to do anyway, honestly, people? All right. Alder Wihilehi?
Yes, we came to the end. So may I make the motion to vote because we have heard from everyone. So I think.
We have, in fact, we have one other Alder in the queue who would be speaking for the second time on the Second Amendment, if he'd like to withdraw. Or if you'd like to call the question.
Call the question.
Okay. On the Second Amendment, which is the amendment from Alder Figueroa Cole, which I'm just going to read it because I want you all to know what you're voting on. It would remove language resolved at the Madison Police Department. It would strike the language not implement full deployment outside of the pilot without authorization by and replace it with, provide the common counsel a full budget analysis regarding the approximate cost of full implementation and ongoing operating costs 60 days after the 90 day pilot or earlier if available. That's what you're voting on. So all those in favor of that language, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Knox? Alder Knox, no. Aldo Latimer Burris?
No.
Latimer Burris, no. Aldo Madison?
Yes.
Aldo Madison, yes. Aldo Martinez Rutherford?
Yes.
Sure. Aldo Meadsie?
No.
Meadsie, no. Aldo Rommel?
Yes.
Aldo Rommel, yes. Aldo Slack?
No.
Aldo Slack, no. Aldo Tischler?
No.
Aldo Tischler, no. Aldo Viver?
Aye.
Aldo Viver, aye. Aldo Vitterer?
Aye.
Aldo Vitterer, aye. Aldo Wihilehi?
No.
Wihilehi, no. Aldo Bennett?
Aye.
Aldo Bennett, aye. Aldo Conklin?
Aye.
Aldo Conklin, aye. Aldo Curry?
Aye.
Aldo Curry, aye. Aldo Duncan?
Aye.
Aldo Duncan, aye. Aldo Evers?
Aye.
Aldo Evers, aye. Aldo Field?
Aye.
Aldo Field, aye. Aldo Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aldo Figueroa Cole, aye. Aldo Grovind Rajan?
Aye.
Aldo Grovind Rajan, aye. And back to Aldo Martinez Rutherford. Aye. Thank you. Thirteen ayes, seven nos.
With thirteen ayes, that amended language passes and we are back to the original amendment from President Curry. Let's see. Aldo Madison, I had you in the queue on that one. Do you want to speak to the original amendment?
This will be the last vote?
Uh, no.
Hold me to the last one. I just need more coffee, honestly.
Okay. So I got to make another list. Hold on. All right. So we are on the amendment. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting the amendment. And do I speak to my reasoning now?
If you wish, Alder. It's up to you.
Okay, thank you. April 2022, after three hours of debate, 1:00 AM to 4:00 AM, the council voted 11 to 9, approve the pilot and the North District funding, for the pilot is already in the budget. The 2021 Capitol budget included $83,000 in geo borrowing for 48 body worn cameras, related equipment and training, which was adopted as a carry forward appropriation in the 2022 Capitol budget. It is time to move forward. It is time to move forward until you have a parent collapse in your arms, sobbing, asking the question, if only I knew what those last hours of life was like. Body worn cameras, as stated, is not a panacea that will guarantee public safety, but we can no longer depend on personal cell phones to capture and record what happened. All law enforcement departments in Dane County use some form of body worn cameras, except Dane County. The definition for a pilot has been given. The pastor, Pastor Allen, membership of 550 African American congregants, president of the African American Council of Churches, Judge Everett Mitchell, membership in a black congregation over 300 members, and a judge, 100 black men, Floyd Rose, registered but not speaking, Pia Kenny James, the first African American female police officer, Eva Vivian, Deana Wright, Edith Hilliard, Donna Morland, former Alder, Jasmine Banks, Kirby All of these are supporting the body, the original body worn camera. I was first elected in 2015. I supported body worn cameras then. The pilot failed. 2023, it is time. The community, when I knocked on doors, public safety and support of body worn cameras was the top of the list. The police have held its share of table sessions designed to build mutual understanding about the use of technology in law enforcement and engaged in honest conversation about the use of body worn cameras. This is a one-year pilot. The pilot calls for 48 body worn cameras in the North District. The body worn camera pilot program will provide information and data to MPD and the council to help in assessing body worn cameras for the Madison Police Department. It will be backed on data in the decision-making process, assess needs, what's missing, and those gaps. I will be supporting the original and not the substitute. Finally, it disturbs me that supporters of body worn camera feared reprisal and loss of allocated funding if they spoke in support of body worn cameras. I will not be supporting the substitute. It is time for us to move forward with the original body worn camera amendment as proposed. I will not be supporting the amendment.
Yes, Aldo Conklin?
Alder Harrington McKinney said this was a one-year program and I don't want people to get confused that this is only a 90 day pilot. So I just wanted to make that public knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Conklin. You are correct. All right. Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Aldo Duncan on the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting this amendment. It does allow this program to move forward, which I think a lot of us are wanting this program to be put in place, this pilot, to see what body cameras can potentially provide information-wise for us. I think with this added information for the amendment, it just lays out kind of the expectations that we as council are requesting from the results of the pilot, and so I will be supporting this amendment.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Evers. This would be the third time on the amendment?
Well, thank you, Mayor, for the indulgence. I will be supporting the amendment and under the guidance that we were asking MPD to do what they were planning to do anyways, and if it, if it pleases the body and helps others vote for us to move forward, which, which President Curry's amendment does do, it endorses the pilot, then I support that.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Martinez Rutherford?
I will say, I have a lot of concerns, but I, I do believe that this amendment does quell some of those for me, whether they just make me feel better about it or not. I do think this is a very expensive project that will pretty much tell us all the things that we can hear from police departments all over the country. But I would like to support this amendment, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. On the amendment, Aldo Latimer Burris, it would be for the third time?
So I'm probably going to support it because what's going to happen is if, if, if we don't have, if the votes don't go, the first one's going to get, is going to get, is going to be dead. So it's just a way to switch up, you know, authors and whatnot. But what I, but the issue that I have with it is still, and I did actually take your advice, Madam Mayor, I went and talked to the attorney, because it's a whereas paragraph, it doesn't have like the teeth if it was, you know, the next paragraph after the whereas. I'm so tired, I can't even think of what the next paragraph says. But it is, it is, it's kind of like an in, what you call an in-run, you know, in like football where you, you know, go backwards. So it's, so if we were all off a council in like 10 years, okay, and they went back and looked at the record, on the record, it would look like we did not, that the report did not substantially comply because of it's all, you know, the city attorney's not interpreting it. That's what it's left up to us. And the language that is put in there says, you know, that basically it could be interpreted that we didn't, that the police chief did not comply. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I'm so tired, I can barely think right now. But I'm going to do it because this, I'm going to, I'm probably going to support it because where we're at in this game, if you will, is when it gets killed, if it gets, you know, the amendment gets supported, then we're not going back to the first motion. But I don't like that language that says in there that they did not substantially comply. It does say that. It does. I just went and talked to the attorney and it could be interpreted that way. I'm not going to put that on her that says, oh, it has to. It could be. In 10 years, when they did legislative intent and they want to know what the council was thinking, they could interpret that to say it was not substantially complying, but we're going to do the pilot anyway, period.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Knox, it would be for the third time?
Thank you for your indulgence.
Y'all are killing me.
I'm going to be brief, though. I'm not going to support this amendment because basically I think we need to trust the expertise of our staff. I don't think we should be micromanaging people who are experts in their field. Everybody wants to put in their little micromanaging amendments. But the fact of the matter is, we have a, a police chief who's qualified, who's confident, who actually has experience in this area. And we don't even seem to value his expertise. So I'm not going to support this. I think we need to respect the expertise of the staff that we have in the city of Madison, which I think is pretty well-qualified. And I'm pretty much qualified to know, since I worked in the other government of the county, and I'll tell you, they're very qualified and know what they're doing. So I'm not supporting this amendment based on that.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Slack on the amendment?
Yes, I, I am still unclear about the relationship between this feasibility committee and the other entities that voted substantially in favor of the original proposed resolution. So if you could clarify that for me, Madam Mayor, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder. There might be others that are more qualified to walk you through the history than I am, but the feasibility committee was. but the feasibility committee was convened to make recommendations, and they did, including fairly detailed recommendations on what a policy should and should not include. After they made their recommendations, they adjourned sine die. They don't exist anymore. So this question was not referred back to them because they are no longer meeting.
Can I have one follow-up question?
Yeah.
And I also still am confused because in the table outlining the discrepancies, it seems like a fair number of them are actually moot or not accurate as discrepancies because existing state laws and policies are in place that dictate what we should be doing with any particular item. So while I appreciate these concerns, I believe the budget analysis is going to happen. I believe we can ask for information as the pilot is being conducted. I don't believe we're gonna have a definitive answer on whether it works to influence any particular outcome, but we can learn a lot about how these body worn cameras are applied and implemented, and we can have our growing list of questions and concerns and reassurances as the pilot goes forth. I just, I don't, so I won't be supporting this amendment. I think this is, I think that we are able to proceed and get the information we need with the original language.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in the queue wishing to speak on the amendment? So what is before us is President Curry's amendment, which would change several clauses in the whereas portion of the resolution. There's a clause relating to the contents. There's a clause stating that there are several components of what was recommended by the feasibility review committee that are different from what's in the policy. There's a whereas clause that's saying, that's asking for a specific report, and there's a whereas clause asking for continued work on the policy, and then there's the amended clause asking for the budget projections. On the amendment, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Knox?
No.
Alder Knox, no. Alder Latimer-Burrus?
No.
Sure. Alder Madison?
Yes.
Alder Madison, aye. Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
Aye.
Alder Martinez-Rutherford, aye. Alder Miyazi? Alder Miyazi, no. Alder Rummel?
Aye.
Alder Rummel, aye. Alder Slack?
No.
Alder Slack, no. Alder Tischler?
No.
Alder Tischler, no. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Alder Revere, aye. Alder Vidver?
Aye.
Alder Vidver, aye. Alder Ohelia?
No.
Alder Ohelia, no. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Alder Duncan, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Field?
Aye.
Alder Field, aye. Alder Figaro-Cole?
Aye.
Alder Figaro-Cole, aye. Alder Govindarajan?
Aye.
Alder Govindarajan, aye. And back to Alder Latimer-Burrus?
No.
Alder Latimer-Burrus, no. Thirteen ayes, seven nos.
With 13 ayes, the amendment passes, and we are back to the main motion, which is to adopt the resolution as amended. Now Alder Madison.
Yay. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just gonna share some of my thoughts about where I'm at on the issue and then some facts from the ACLU. So in today's society, the absence of community care and strategic divestment in marginalized communities has resulted in significant challenges for numerous families in Madison. The impact of a lack of resources can be seen in the high incarceration rates of black men. As Wisconsin reported again in 2021, we possess the highest incarceration rate per capita for this demographic. Moreover, the racial income disparities faced by black women, who overwhelmingly are responsible for the overall wellness of their households, further highlight the pressing need for investment in black households, neighborhoods, and communities. I just want to speak to the importance of community care and investment in Madison's black families and the potential positive impact on reducing incarceration rates and promoting equity. So the cost of incarceration, the families of many local Madisonians, including my own, know all too well the cost of a lack of resources as they experience the incarceration of their loved ones. The alarm may increase the number of incarcerated black individuals, as even reported by Chief Barnes in his recent presentation, where we all heard that in 2021 or 2022, quarter one, there were 723 arrested black folks, and in 2023, same time, it went up to 990, or 725 and 990. And so strategic investment over time has disproportionately affected black families, leading to a majority of black households being led by black women and mothers. So with black women earning significantly less than their white counterparts, which is at 55 cents on a dollar compared to white women at 85 cents on a dollar, it is evident that investment is crucial for the well-being of these households, neighborhoods, and communities. So community centers and similar organizations play a vital role in providing community care to families across Madison. By launching pilot programs, they assess the feasibility and benefits of potential initiatives before full implementation. However, it is essential to consider the costs and benefits carefully, especially when dealing with limited resources such as the city's future budget. The absence of a clear estimate for the full implementation cost of certain initiatives such as body worn cameras for the Madison Police Department hampers the ability to conduct a proper cost-benefit analysis. Nevertheless, investment in community care is necessary to alleviate the burden borne by black individuals who effectively finance policing through the loss of their own freedom. So for me tonight, a no vote should not be seen as anti-police. It represents a commitment to the city's core values of equity, civic engagement, well-being, shared prosperity, and stewardship. Choosing to invest in Madisonians who face the greatest challenges in their daily lives aligns with these values and principles, fostering a more inclusive and supportive community. It is essential to recognize that investing in community care does not undermine law enforcement, but instead emphasizes the need for a balanced approach that addresses the root causes of crime. So the urgency of investing in community care extends beyond policing issues. The Madison community must rally behind initiatives that address affordable housing, support for the chronically unhoused, mental health programs, and community centers, just neighborhood level programs, period. So these votes directly impact those in need, particularly black families and individuals residing in apartments mentioned earlier, such as the Meadowlands, Revkey, Harmony, and Tree Lane. By prioritizing these investments, Madison can make a significant stride towards equity and prosperity for all residents. So the incarceration rates of black individuals in Madison and the income disparities faced by black women underscore the pressing need for community care and strategic investment. By supporting neighborhood-level care and similar initiatives, Madison can work towards reducing incarceration rates and promoting equity within its diverse population. A no vote should be seen as a commitment to core values, guiding the city to address the needs of its most vulnerable members.
Alder Madison, could you pause for a minute? Alder Ohelia, you have a point of order?
I think it's irrelevant what Alder Madison is talking about. We are here to vote for the pilot program.
Alder, the Alder is providing context on why she's gonna vote the way she is, and I think that's broadly allowable. Alder Madison, please continue.
I'm just about done. So, a no vote should be seen, blah, 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 values, core values that I always mention. So moreover, a call to action from our local community encourages the community to rally around crucial initiatives that would pave the way for a more inclusive and thriving society for us all, especially here in Madison. Through genuine community care and investment, Madison, we could really actually build a stronger and equitable future for us all. So I hope to see many of this evening's registrants at future common council meetings where our agenda includes topics such as invested in local community centers or neighborhood-level programming, especially those mentioned by Judge Mitchell, including housing, transportation, and mental health. Now for just a couple of quick facts from the ACLU, because we did receive a good number of emails, and then we have folks coming in here in person, and a common theme I heard was that body worn cameras would lead to more accountability, transparency, and it builds trust. And so from the ACLU, which I very much agree with these statements and facts, is that even when body camera footage has clearly demonstrated officer misconduct, often such footage has not held police accountable. So a comprehensive review of 70 empirical studies of body worn cameras found that body cameras have not statistically significant or consistent effects in decreasing police use of force. Body camera footage is disproportionately used to prosecute civilians rather than officers. One 2016 study found that 92.6% of prosecutors' offices in jurisdictions with body cameras have used that footage as evidence to prosecute civilians, while just 8.3% have used it to prosecute police. And then it is important to note that body camera footage can be incomplete, and in many cases, it is manipulated or can be manipulated or edited to bolster police narratives of what occurred during an incident instead of depicting the full picture, because officers have the power to control the cameras and the footage collected. Body camera footage can distort reality while providing an illusion of accuracy. So for example, in 2014, Florida deputies chased and beat a suspected drug dealer. While body camera footage seemed to confirm what the officers wrote in their incident reports, that person was, you know, resisting arrest. A surveillance camera from a nearby building completely contradicted these reports and showed that this person had clearly attempted to surrender voluntarily, but was, you know, still brutally beaten. So I just want to say before spending, us spending millions of dollars on body cameras eventually, that we just, we don't sort of like look at this as a, sort of like, as a means to an end. Like, this is not a means to an end. Folks, I don't, it feels like this is, some folks view this as like, this is this tool to solve like the issues that we find with policing, and this is not that. And I don't hear anyone urgently coming in here, urgently pressing us to sort of like solve some of the issues that lead to crime and lead to these higher arrest rates. And I would encourage us to be very adamant about once the police, you know, once the body worn camera, if it passes tonight and it's implemented, that we sort of like hold true to what we say we want from this study, like, plain and simple. So that's my piece.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett on the main motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was not gonna speak to the pilot or to the media broadly, but since it seemed allowable to others, and it is in direct connection to the pilot program, I am going to explain my thoughts and my votes. One Alder previously mentioned that many of us are going into, that several Alders are going into this with bias, either for and against. And self-admittedly, I am one of those Alders that is extremely biased. And I come into this space because of deep-felt black trauma that we have seen that Alder Madison spoke to. One Alder list, made a list of names of who is in this room. I have a list of people who are not in this room. George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Tyree Nichols, Manuel Esteban Perez, Michael Brown, Dante Wright, Andre Hill, India Cummings, Corinne Gaines, all of whom, their murders were filmed. And yet they were still murdered, and yet many of those officers were not charged, indicted, or anything. So pardon me for having bias. I am very annoyed with constantly referring to black trauma to justify why we need to film the murder of black people or just film trauma in general. Mamie Till knew exactly what they did to her baby. She did not need a filming of the final hours of Emma Till's death to tell her what they did to him. She knew exactly what happened. So the logic of I want to, of filming the last hours of a child's life, especially when it is that traumatic, is so strange to me. In 2023, so far, 555 people have been murdered by the police. In 2022, 1,097. 2021, 1,048. 2020, 1,020, many of whom, as we mentioned, had body cameras present. So pardon me for being a bit biased and skeptical. Finally, maybe not finally, but I know that we have several notable black leaders that are able to be present here, and I appreciate that they are able to be present. My vote is in relation to the people that are not present, are in relation to the many, many, many young black people in this city that are very concerned about just leaving their homes because of fear of being attacked and traumatized more by the police department. So pardon me for being biased. In my own bias, I am very, I find it very, I'm admittedly skeptical, and I still find it problematic that several of the committee's reports were not, were discarded and not implemented in this report, especially in relation to charging and pleading rates, which is the whole point of why the pilot was suggested in the first place, that is completely lost upon us. We know that over 50% of the people incarcerated in Dane County Jail right now are black people, and the pilot program is supposed to help us understand if having body worn cameras will increase the amount of black people, over 50%, that are currently in Dane County Jail, that may in the future be in Dane County Jail. So pardon me for being biased. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Come back to me?
You're the only person in the queue, Alder.
You put me in quite a predicament here. Alder Bennett's words are very strong, and I really appreciate that. And I believe she has a point. I think it is important to remember the people not in this room. 10 years ago would be a perfect time to implement body cameras. I think that is when the country, for the most part, was starting to realize that they could be a tool. And you are right, this is, or Madam Chair, I believe, my colleague is right, where it is a tool, but it has not been utilized, and it does not always lead to justice, and it should be. I am a bit more optimistic, hopefully. I hope I am not wrong to be optimistic here in Madison, that this is not just something to do, but this is the first step that we can revise our policies, we can revise our rules or laws or whatever it is, to make sure that this is a tool, but in accordance to whatever we do in the future, that also we do get justice for the people who deserve it. And I think that is very important. I have been in support of body cameras, and I will be in this vote as well. I think the amendments that went through, I am really happy for that because it reaffirmed council's ability to basically direct, hey, this is what we want to see because we represent the people who elected us here, and I am glad that we have that oversight, and I'm glad that we will continue to use that oversight as time goes on and as this pilot goes on. And I'm really looking forward to the data that comes out of this pilot as well. So with that, I guess, I am in favor of this pilot. I'm really looking forward to seeing what comes out of it, and I encourage my fellow Alder colleagues to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burrus?
Okay, I'll make this quick. So I'm gonna be in support. We are not going to solve racism, bigotry, bias, or the bigotry of microaggressions, or the bigotry of, you know, using at times, you know, marginalized communities. We will no doubt have to write rules, revamp, this is my original thought on the original motion. We will have to work on things, and we are gonna be imperfect. And we are actually gonna have to address some of the issues that have been raised, such as when officers turn off their cameras, as they did in South Bend, Indiana, and then murdered someone. So hopefully, we will have impact with this on a systematic system that is imperfect, and I know it well because my brother went in and out of the system for 45 years and then died, so I got a good perspective on it. And also, contrary to my colleague, which I appreciate her point of view, I do want body cameras because we also have the Sandra Bland situation where, you know, she was trying to assert her rights just to be a human being and did not make it through the system all the way. And why I say that is, right here in And why I say that is, uh, right here in, uh, Wisconsin, right here in the Madison area, I've had the experience of being pulled over, and, uh, thank God for the, for the camera, because when we went to court, everything that the officer said happened actually did not happen. So I'll be supporting that. And, uh, yeah. See, we're not monolithic.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Meante?
Uh, I closed up my laptop, so I don't have a big spill to basically say, but, you know, we cannot continue to have the illusion of equity and inclusiveness. When I say that, I mean by, we cannot continue to discount our community leaders that came and spoke, and act like we know more than them. I do agree with a lot that my colleagues have said, as far as expressing the trauma and pain. But we cannot continue to be guided by our pain, but actually talk about how to make change, how to make reform. When the chief gave his quarterly review, he talked about some of the things that most African Americans were arrested for. And these were small crimes, like OWI, marijuana. That's a shame that those little crimes have gotten people, especially African Americans, arrested. But what if, by having a body camera on the officers, could tell that they were not supposed to be arrested? We have not tried this. This is just a pilot. So we cannot say that this will, in Madison, everybody else has had it around Madison, every down place in Dane County, Middleton, some area which is growing with a lot more minorities has got it. So we need this. It's just a tool, but I am telling you how important this tool could be in transforming public safety. So I cannot continue, and we cannot continue to go upon our pain about what trauma we have been through. I understand it. I understand it. I've, my sons have, have witnessed it already. So I know firsthand. So I just want to say, I will definitely be supporting the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
I mean, oh, did I say something backwards? Oh, that's a minute. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. A few weeks ago, when Chief Barnes asked for sponsorship of Resolution 78341, I told him he didn't need my support. Honestly, I had given up on this discussion. For some of us, the body worn cameras discussion predates, predates years before becoming Alder. I have been in and out of this conversation for almost 10 years. However, this topic wasn't, this topic wasn't at the center of my decision to run for office. But every time it's discussed, it manages to recenter me. It reminds me of the many times I had to hear council members long winded speeches agreeing with, with our statements, giving us the false hope of being understood, only to vote against our pleas. I have heard these speakers, the speakers' voices before. They all believe they speak for the rest of the city. I know the feeling. Every time this topic comes up, it takes me back to the long nights, sitting in the chamber as a guest, listening to the floor discussion, unable to interrupt, to join, to join into the conversation. But today, the frustrated tone coming from public testimony reminds me that I'm no longer in the corner looking in what I'm in, I am in, and I shouldn't relinquish my voice, especially not on this critical topic. Early in 2021, before, I, before becoming an Alder, I emailed council and the feasibility committee, asking the committee and council to provide the cost of full implementation. It is August 2023, and I'm still waiting for the answers. I have centered my opposition on the cost of full implementation. However, today, the budget concerns are not in front of us. So I am not going to talk about the budget. I'm not going to take you to 1955 America either. I am going to bring you right here to Madison, Wisconsin. After two years as an Alder, I can confidently say with 100% confidence and certainty, that Madison has a pretty decent police agency. As the Alder of a district serviced by three police stations and has three NRTs, I have constant interactions with MPD. I also tell you with certainty that our police officers want accountability as much as we do. They do not wish to be represented by a bunch of bad apples. So let's talk about accountability. On March 6, 2015, we have footage of a police officer quietly entering a house, shooting his weapon six times. We see other officers approaching the scene, and at that moment, the officer who fired his gun six times identifies himself as a police officer. On June 3, 2019, we have footage of, of police officers restraining a teenage boy with a mental health crisis. This restraint continued while an officer assaulted the child by punching him on his head repeatedly. On October 10, 2021, a police officer discharged his gun during a downtown arrest, shooting one of his coworkers. On November 2022, we had three cops involved in DUIs and domestic abuse charges. One of those three officers was the one who discharged his weapon back in October 2021. Last night, I sat there, I watched all these videos, I checked the city staff directory, and most of these cops are still actively employed by the city of Madison. That's not accountability. Punching a teenage boy while restrained by other adults cost the city $1.2 million. That money didn't come from MPD's budget. That's not accountability. The six bullets in 2015 also cost the city millions of dollars. But both incidents were recorded and available for all of us to see. How can we talk about accountability when in the case of the beating of the teenager, the response from the justice system is, and I quote, "An outside agency review all the evidence surrounding this incident and determine that the officer's use of force was within acceptable methods and procedures of their, of their training, as well as objectively reasonable under the relevant legal standard," unquote. Where is the accountability? March 6, 2015, put Madison's two living tales on display. Here we are in 2023, counting, continuing to have missed opportunities to provide accountability to the public. Still, more importantly, we have become complicit and denied good officers the ability to do their jobs safely. The amendments made to the resolution give me some comfort, that perhaps we will get some answers. But I still will not vote in favor of something that provides us with zero assurances for transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison for the second time?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to, I forgot a couple, uh, notes beforehand, but one thing I wanted to just reiterate, and I'm not sure if I've said it before, but we have to be very careful about petting black leaders against each other. When black people disagree with black people, it does not equate to disrespect. So for example, even though I disagree with Chief Barnes on some aspect, I don't not like the man. You know, I think he's very brilliant, very smart. Anybody who puts himself in his position, you know, has to be smart. So I just want to reiterate, when we, black people disagree with each other, that does not equate to disrespect nor dislike. So we should not, because we are not a monolith, we are not all the same. And then I also want to reiterate that when I am talking about any facts, I, I very much attempt as, as much as possible to stick to the, to facts versus just talking in theater, or political theater, or just theory. So using my own family and a sample day, a sample set of, of families that I've worked with over the years, my family alone, my son is the only man out of eight men in the family who does not have a criminal record. Four out of the eight men are currently in prison. So when I am speaking, I am speaking from the facts of my own family and the facts of many black Madisonians in town. So I just want to reiterate that I do not speak in theory, nor political theater. These are absolute facts.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, I'm certainly not going to engage in the conversation of sharing pain here. Because I don't think anybody has a monopoly on, on, on pain. You know? You're talking to someone who, who actually has been a victim of police violence. So I'm not going to go down that road. Here's what I think. I think the good thing in all of this is we finally decided to move this agenda forward. Okay? And I think everybody in this room feels passionate about the issue of making sure that our police department is accountable and responsible. And, and what I was trying to say from the beginning is, the body where, the, the camera isn't perfect. It's just a tool. It's one tool that maybe we actually might be able to see the interaction between the police and our community. We, I think the city has done a good thing. We have a, a, a police, a COB that has subpoena power. Now, when they get up to, to speed, they should be using that too. That's another tool of trying to find accountability and justice for people. So let's just dial it down a little bit, and focus on what we're trying to accomplish here. Because I'm gonna tell you, nobody has monopoly over pain around here. You know, um, I heard someone, one of the speakers, were trying to, um, compare us to, to Minneapolis Police Department. I'm gonna tell you something. What happened in Minneapolis was no accident. I went with some, the South District Police Officers, we went up as a group with community members to go look in that same third precinct to, to see if we could look at some models for police and community relations. And you know what the first question I found out was? I looked on the wall, I saw a whole picture of police officers, and they were all white. It was 100 and something police officers in that precinct. And when I asked the captain, how many persons of color did they have, they said two, and they weren't black. But they had a large Somali population in that precinct. They had a large Latino population in that precinct. That's no accident. So I don't want to hear anybody compare the Madison Police Department to the Minneapolis Police Department, because we are not that. I know enough police officers, and I know this department. Now, I come from Milwaukee. I grew up under Chief Harold Breyer, if any of you get, remember him. So I know what a bad police department feels like personally. So let's just be real. We have a very professional police department. Nothing is perfect. And we want them to be better. And I think our chief wants them to be better and accountable too. So we need to all work together. We've been beating this, this, this horse for too many years. Too many. So it's time to get on with the pilot. Let's get the data that we can get, and then we'll be sitting here making another decision, uh, uh, three months down the road. Okay? And we'll know a little bit more about what this city can and can't do. So, you know, I just want to, just really, you know, let everybody know I respect everybody in this room. Even though y'all like to talk, more than me, and that take a lot. Trust me. But I think we all need to, you know, we don't have to agree, but we got to move forward. So at least I feel good about that. We're moving forward on this item. Thank you. I appreciate it. Well, we getting there. I'm, 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 I'm trying to convince you guys, let's move forward and get it done.
You said you were gonna be brave.
That was brave. That was brave.
Thank you, Alder Knox. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm from St. Louis, Missouri, and, um, when Michael Brown was killed, um, I was contemplating whether I wanted to run for, um, public office. And I'm a very private person, and I said no, because I am a very private person. But I went back to, um, St. Louis, specifically Ferguson. And I always tell the story is, is that the outline of the blood was right, uh, there in the street. I also tell the story of the, the memorial that was, had been building right in front of an apartment building. And I also tell the story about I lived in that apartment building, right in front of where Michael Brown got killed. I knew Ferguson Police, and I knew their history. And I asked myself the question whether I'm going to complain about, um, what's so, or I'm going to come back to Madison and make a difference. I also tell the story of that, the night that I came back to Madison was March the 6th. It was the date of the killing of Tony Robinson. And I say all this as a summarizing, is, is that, um, it has been a long time coming to even approve the, the pilot. I have a great deal of respect for, um, the former Chief Ray, who said that body, body worn cameras for Madison Police is a no brainer. He's also said that he wished that he had, uh, his officers had body worn cameras in that stairwell. All of that is weighing on my decision, um, and I support, um, Chief Barnes. I have a great deal of respect for him. It's difficult for me, um, to decide how I'm going to vote, because the, um, the city attorney said once is that you have to make adjustments, and you have to make trade offs. And I'm at this point where it's a trade off, because I believe that the pilot is very important to give us the information that we need. But I wish that we had been able to approve the pilot, um, as it was presented. And so I'm, I don't know how I'm going to vote, uh, but please understand that, um, the amendments are fine, but I, I truly believed that the essence of the original amendment was sufficient and should have been passed. And so I'm rambling, and I'll connect, I'll disconnect, but I don't know how I'm going to vote.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel? We only have two Alders in the queue at this point in time. Do you wish to call the question? Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. I think about this issue, I, I have to start with Poli Henin. I'm getting shot on Baldwin Street, and I don't even know if I can pull out the year and be correct. 2013, maybe? And I went down there, and it was like a journey I started, and the whole city started, not quite yet, but many people started on a journey with me. And then in 2015, when Tony Robinson was killed, and that was escalated, and that's how we started this, all the stuff that we've done as a council. We did a lot of stuff because of Tony Robinson. Everybody on the council at that time, from, you know, whatever our left to right is, they were all pretty much in favor, maybe one exception. And we moved forward on creating various study groups and processes, and hired consultants, and got more money for the consultant, and on and on. The Body Worn Feasibility Committee. And during that period, there was at least one Alder that, and maybe others, that would periodically, every budget, like, put in an amendment, let's have body worn cameras. But they didn't really do the homework that we have now done. And I always voted against it, and it didn't prevail. But I am going to vote for this pilot. I don't say that I will eventually vote for body worn cameras. I do not know. I have a lot of doubt about the cost of that program. You know, when we are always struggling with money, how are we going to say that that's the best use of our money, is to train, store data, have officers spend whatever time is involved in reporting what they've collected on their, when their day of wearing this thing? That's a lot of time and money we're going to be spending. This pilot, I believe, will help us understand, maybe not completely or perfectly, will help us understand what will be involved. And we'll see how it played out with the various ways, like, the, the recommendations in the report about, you know, you know, all that stuff that's in that 11-page report. report. So when I think, I guess when I think about Tony Robinson and his family, and the people around that whole movement, you know, they're absolutely convinced that Matt Kenny murdered Tony Robinson to this day. You know, 2015 is 2023. You would not tell most of them, and they would, they would just distrust that. But if Matt Kenny had been wearing a body worn camera, it wouldn't have stopped maybe what happened. I'm not trying to say somehow it's a preventative tool. I do not believe that for one second. We've seen that. But at least we would know what happened in that stairway that we do not know now. And we can say, I think it was X. But it's not really, it's really difficult. So if nothing else for me, having dealt with officer involved shootings, and in how are we making the police accountable? We didn't have really good programs about use of force or, you know, the council has constitutional authority to direct the police chief to do things. And we use that constitutional authority. I don't think we even knew we had it until we went through that process. And when one of the speakers said how it was really great that the police chief now makes regular quarterly reports, that was a result of our alder committee that recommended that we get quarterly reports, among other things. So we did a lot to get to this point we're at. And all I would say is, even with all our doubts and concerns and I, you know, which I share a lot of, I am going to vote for the pilot. But then we'll see what comes back. And if it's incomplete or it, you know, there's going to be a lot of questions we'll all have, I hope, to discuss what we learn. But I guess I don't want to just push it off and everyone says, oh, you never do anything on the council like this. And at least we'll have data, something to say, okay, well, we learned this, we weren't too sure about this, we didn't get enough on that. We'll have something to like make the next level of decisions. So thank you. And I respect people who are going to vote no, you know, pardon me, thinks, you know, there's people in my world that would say, Marsha, vote no. But I'm voting yes because I want to know what happens sometimes, even if it's incomplete and troubled. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank.
There's, I have no additional alders in the queue after Alder Evers speaks.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind my colleagues of something that the mayor said, that you said, Mayor, from the chair. To any alder who preferred the original motion, the original resolution, and is disappointed that that is not what we're voting on, know that the last clause that we're voting on says, "Be it further resolved that the common council authorizes MPD to implement its body worn camera pilot program." Voting no means to vote against the body worn camera pilot program. I am speaking, I'm sorry, I can look, I am speaking to the mayor. I am encouraging everyone to vote for this because, as the mayor said from the chair, we are simply by adding to this, asking MPD to do what they already were going to do ahead of time. So it would be a mistake for those of you who wanted the original to vote against it at this time because then there will be no pilot. And I would encourage my colleagues to vote for the pilot, vote for the motion that's before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak. The question is adoption of the amended resolution. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Harrington-McKinney? Sure. Alder Knox? Alder Knox, aye. Alder Latimer-Burrus?
Aye.
Alder Latimer-Burrus, aye. Alder Madison?
No.
Alder Madison, no. Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
I'm going to do a moment.
Okay. Alder Meante?
Aye.
Alder Meante, aye. Alder Rommel?
Aye.
Alder Rommel, aye. Alder Slack?
Aye.
Alder Slack, aye. Alder Tischler?
Aye.
Alder Tischler, aye. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Alder Revere, aye. Alder Vidver?
Aye.
Alder Vidver, aye. Alder Walehia?
Aye.
Walehia, aye. Alder Bennett?
No.
Alder Bennett, no. Alder Conklin?
No.
Alder Conklin, no. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Alder Duncan, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Field?
Aye.
Alder Field, aye. Alder Figaro-Cole?
No.
Alder Figaro-Cole, no. Alder Gravindrajan?
Aye.
Alder Gravindrajan, aye. Alder Harrington-McKinney?
Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
Alder Martinez-Rutherford, aye.
So 16 ayes, 4 noes.
16 ayes, the resolution passes. That is the, brings us to the end of our agenda. Are there any announcements or introductions from the floor? Seeing none. Alder Harrington-McKinney, it's your turn. Alder Harrington-McKinney? Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? I see no objection. We are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.